Call the meeting to order. It is April seventeenth, twenty twenty five. This is our regularly scheduled City of Glenwood Springs City Council meeting. If only we always had so many people in the audience. It's lovely to see you all and we welcome you and we thank you for being here this evening. Um, we'll go ahead and call roll.
Mayor Wusso.
Present.
Mayor Protem Dame.
Here.
Counselor Gaudis.
Here.
Counselor Zalinski. Counselor Weimer.
Here.
Counselor Schacter.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Um, do we have any agenda changes? I'll see none. Um, any disclosures of counselor conflicts of interest? Close that. Um, we'll open it to council announcements. Counselor Dan.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I'd like to let the community know that we have a household hazardous waste event and a compost giveaway giveaway at the community center this Saturday from nine AM to two PM. So bring your hazardous waste and take home some compost however you can haul it at the community center, nine to two.
Okay. Counselor Schacter, I think you're next on this list.
Thank you. Uh, next Thursday, April twenty fourth, Community Development Department is hosting a Housing Solutions Symposium. Uh, it'll be at the Glenwood Library from five thirty to seven thirty. Um, it will have an outline of a rent subsidy program with employer partnership with partners. Um, down payment assistance and other resources for those that are interested and those that are struggling for housing in Glenwood. So we hope you will attend and spread the word. Thank you.
Counselor Weimer.
Mine is Saturday, April twenty sixth, so that's nine days, not that that Saturday coming up. The River Commission, uh, is going to be hosting a pre runoff, might be a little late for pre runoff, but a early runoff. Uh, Spring River Cleanup. That's going to be at eight AM at Two Rivers Park. Uh, on our website, uh, you should find, uh, the link and the information so that you can volunteer. It should be a good day.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Zalinski.
And I would like you to all mark your calendars, um, for Saturday, May tenth. Our Glenwood Springs Fire Department is going to have their annual open house. Um, there's going to be lots to do. They have exciting demonstrations, um. Jobs of Life, Fire extinguisher training, uh, tours and a photo booth. So definitely want to see everybody turn out and check them out.
Okay, so obviously with that, it is spring and summer will be just here in a moment. Um, a lot going on in the community. If you're not already signed up for it, we encourage you all to sign up at cog s dot U S slash info. That is City of Glenwood Springs where we regularly disseminate all the things that are happening and all the opportunities in our community. So. Once again, that was C O G S dot U S slash info. Thank you. Bringing it back to council, actually no, back to citizens appearing before council. As a reminder, these are for, um, items that are not on this evening's agenda. I have to say this is the biggest audience, other than when people are here. It's like a land use hearing and people are here to yell at us. This is lovely. So I'm really, really grateful, but it's it's a little, it throws us, I think. Um, so citizens appearing for items not on this evening's agenda. I, I believe there may be one person. Yep, Penny, come on up. So three minutes, um, you can kind of keep an eye up there. I hate to interrupt people. So if there's, if you can keep up, then I don't have to.
I love it that you think I can hear you.
Okay.
Um, I was under the impression sadly that the new council would have taken their seats tonight. So I wanted to appear before council, but that being said, um, I wanted to express my appreciation to all of you and all of the newly elected council people. For your efforts, your achievements and your interest in Glenwood's well-being. Um, welcome to this position of influence and thank you for your service. Uh, I'm here representing the Take A Minute Slowdown in Town Campaign. It was originally, um, originated during the time of our city engineer Terry Parch, as well as Tanya Allen and Deb Figueroa was our city manager. That was back in, of course, twenty nineteen. In April of twenty nineteen, we had appeared before council at that time and they unanimously approved not only the slogan, but the campaign. So I'm here tonight just to remind you all that going forward, it would be lovely if our new council would also unanimously support this effort so that we can continue. To reach out to the various businesses and organizations that are in Glenwood Springs and encourage them to help educate all drivers. About the importance of how their actions behind the wheel influences the desirability of our very cherished community. So lovely Ingrid said I should probably appear here again, uh, when the new council takes their position and I'd be happy to see you then. So. Um, if any of you would like to, as they say, stick up for our community, I'm happy to give you a sticker to put in your car. Which helps us all keep our speed under control because we become ambassadors for this effort. So that's all I have to say and thank you for your time.
Perfect. Um, I'm going to just jump in really quickly, although I have fleeting authority here. And say that I, I think a good idea might be to send any information to city council at C O G S dot U S and we can get you that email address.
Can you use your microphone?
Yep, I'll get closer. Um, we'll make sure you have the city email address for the city council. It's city council at C O G S dot U S, but I'll email you. And it might be a good idea to send all of the information you want city council to have about the.
Prior to coming back.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Ingrid.
Thanks, Dan. Thanks, Dan. Okay, um, I'll bring it back to council for a, a motion to approve the consent agenda. Oh, you want to? Yeah, absolutely. Counselor Schacter.
Thank you. I'd want to do a quick response, uh, thanking Diane, who's been a tireless organizer and advocate for public safety and slowdown in town. Increase awareness of the responsibility of all of our drivers, those passing through and those here, to be aware of safety and community and livability. This has been endorsed, I believe in two thousand nineteen by council. It's never been undone or revoked. So I will have the assumption that it stands. However, um, affirmation in some form would be appropriate, uh, for the new council and I hope it'll be forthcoming. This is a public safety advocate, Diane, and Take A Minute, and it's not political. So I'd encourage us to support Take A Minute and Diane's tireless and relentless efforts on all of our behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, I will now look for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Counselor Zalinski.
Um, I move that we approve the consent agenda as risk.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We get to do some proclamations this evening, which I'm excited for. So we will start this evenings with the proclamation for Tyler Hesse and Amanda Madden. If you two would like to come up front, we would love to read them. Can you turn it for me?
Thank you.
We can do smiles. Okay. Did you guys know this was coming?
Yeah. They call us.
Okay. Okay, we are going to do an official proclamation honoring Amanda Madden and Tyler Hesse for the civic engagement and academic achievement. Whereas Tyler Hesse has served as the, as the youth representative on the Arts and Culture Board since February twenty of twenty-two. And whereas Amanda Madden served as the youth representative on the Parks and Recreation Board from twenty-three to twenty-four. Whereas the Botcher Foundation selects fifty of the most promising high school seniors from nearly two thousand applicants across the state. Whereas Botcher Scholars are selected for their academic achievement. Outstanding character and service in leadership in their schools and communities. Whereas both Ms. Madden and Mr. Hesse have shown great dedication to serving their community and are strong academic, their strong academic careers. Whereas both Ms. Madden and Mr. Hesse have been awarded with the prestigious, am I saying it correctly, Botcher? Betcha, thank you, scholarship. I saw you correct that. Now therefore, I, Ingrid Wusso, Mayor of the City of Glenwood Springs, do hereby recognize and express our sincere gratitude towards Ms. Madden and Mr. Hesse. For their commitment to serving our community and witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Glenwood Springs to be affixed. The seventeenth day of April in the year twenty twenty-five. Well done. Okay, so we have a copy of this for both of you. Ryan, do you have a second one?
Um, yes, it, it'll be just one minute.
Yeah, do you want to say anything to your family or anything? Please, please, opportunity.
I want to thank the Parks and Recreation Commission for letting me serve for two years. It was a great time and I learned a lot and also my mom and dad for everything.
I'd also just like to say thank you to everybody, my parents and the Arts and Culture Board. Yeah, big shout out to Arts and Culture Board.
Turn it on. Can I say anything? Okay, okay, great. Thank you both so much. You guys are the, the future of our community and we are so grateful for all that you did in the last few years. Your comments and your, your, just your addition to our meetings. We have a tendency to be able to give service when we are in different chapters of our lives. So your willingness to commit at this chapter of your life, the time, the passion and the energy that you gave, we really, really appreciate you both. So thank you. Thank you so much. Okay?
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Next one. And there's quite a few members in the community, if you guys want to come on up with me. Somebody should have told me how to say it before I started. Yeah.
Hi, Ingrid.
Yeah. No, I didn't know. Thank you. Okay. Um, before I start, why don't you guys introduce yourselves? You want to start?
Paul Owens and I had Parkinson's Disease for three or four years.
My name is Suzanne Stewart and I've had Parkinson's Disease for just a titch over five years.
I made my voice and I've, uh, had this problem for about, uh, two years.
What'd you say?
Two years.
Twenty.
I have.
It's been a while.
Karen Longhorst, I'm his wife. I'm his mom. That's my baby.
Yeah.
And she's also a retired nurse as well.
Not everybody.
Not him.
That's a chest, right?
So I am, I'm going to pull down, I'm going to do a proclamation for you guys, but before we get, I just want to say thank you. Thank you so much for coming this evening and thank you for bringing this awareness to our community.
Yeah, thank you for being mayor.
Okay.
And thank you for allowing us to be almost your last proclamation.
It is.
We really appreciate you seeing you in the hospital when he was there.
Yeah.
And I, you know, respect and appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck in the future.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Okay, a proclamation for Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month, April twenty twenty-five. Whereas Parkinson's Disease is a chronic progressive neurological disease and is the second most common neurodegenerative disease, disease in the United States. Affecting almost a million people in the United States with one person being diagnosed with Parkinson's Disease every nine minutes. The prevalence of Parkinson's Disease is expected to rise to one point two million individuals by twenty thirty. Whereas Parkinson's Disease and related health issues are the fourteenth leading cause of death in the United States, according to the Centers of Disease for Disease Control and Prevention. Whereas it is estimated that the total national economic burden of Parkinson's is approximately fifty-two billion each year. This includes the direct medical costs such as treatment, social security payments and lost income. Of twenty-five point four billion and indirect costs to patients and family members of twenty-six point five billion dollars per year in the United States. Whereas research suggests the cause of Parkinson's Disease is a combination of genetic and environmental factors. But the exact cause and progression of the disease is still unknown. Whereas there is no objective test or biomarker for Parkinson's Disease and there is no cure or medication to slow or halt the progression of the disease. Whereas the symptoms of Parkinson's Disease vary from person to person and can include tremors, slowness of movement and rigidity. Difficulty with balance, swallowing, chewing and speaking, cognitive impairments and dementia. Mood disorders such as depression and anxiety, skin problems and sleep difficulties. Whereas researchers, caregivers and medical professional, professionals are working to improve the quality of life. Of persons living with Parkinson's Disease and their families through the research, education and community support services necessary in finding more effective treatments. And to providing access to quality care to those living with the disease today. And witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Glenwood Springs to be affixed the seventeenth day of April in the year twenty twenty-five. Yeah. Thank you.
Maybe a hug later.
Okay. Now, thank you all. If anybody has anything they wanted to say, you're more than welcome to.
Well, I almost always have something to say, as you all know.
And that's why.
Yeah, that's right. That's why you love me. No, I just, um, in addition to saying thank you for everyone's support and being here tonight. I just wanted to let you know that the Parkinson's Walk this year is earlier in September than last. It's September. It's the third September. Yeah, it's earlier. Watch for it in the paper. I want to say the twenty-third, but if it's not, what's this, what would be the Saturday before the twenty-third? It would be.
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Yeah, so I think that's it. Yeah. At any rate, thank you so much. It's up at Crown Mountain Park and we usually have a great turnout. Is what?
Third Saturday is the twentieth.
Oh, what's the, so the one before is the thirteenth. It's the thirteenth then. Thank you for looking that up there and you had my back there, girl. Okay.
She always has.
Yeah, she does. At any rate, thank you and hope to see some of you there, if not all of you. Thanks.
Can I give this to you guys, okay? You can maybe share it with the community. Yeah.
Can I say something?
Yeah, of course. Sue.
Um, Dave and I are celebrating our fifty-first, fifty-fourth anniversary today. Not only retiring, but. And I was, I'm a retired RN and in my nursing career of almost fifty years, I really didn't know what a caregiver was. I worked in the hospital. I worked in home care, but until we developed this and we're living through this journey, let me tell you, a caregiver is a very hard job. And we appreciate all the, uh, efforts that the community does for us and, uh, Parkinson's Support Groups here are nonprofit. That's why it's so important for us to have a vitality walk and, um, some donations because that's the only way that Parkinson's people in the area. Get money to continue with their exercise program, to get other things like wheelchairs and such. So it's a very important, um. Unfortunately, necessary thing for a lot of people. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Our parents, my parents have been married two days longer than you guys.
Oh. Bragging. There was something up there. She's like.
Oh, she is. We should have brought her up to.
Mayor Wusso. Mayor Wusso.
Now, Marco just said now to the somber part of the night. Sounds really sad. Okay, um, so we'll go ahead. There are two outgoing city councillors this evening. Um, Counselor Gaudis, who was previously mayor for four years. And then I will also be, um, ending my term this evening. And so we're going to both just take a moment to make some comments. I'll let Counselor Gaudis first. You ready? How are you going to hear what I have to say if you're over there doing your homework?
You should have last word.
Just giving you a hard time.
Just, just give me a little.
Okay, great. I'll go ahead and start then. I, I actually, I took the time, um, ahead of time because I was fearful that I would talk too long or. Forget to say things and I, I went ahead and, and did an article in the paper, which I really thank the Post Independent, Taylor is here this evening. Thank you, Taylor. Um, so I have had an opportunity to say thank you to so many people in the community. My family is here. Thank you guys so much for being here this evening. I have friends here, um, a lot of loved ones and, and truly. And, and truly, the rest of you, even though you're usually here on council evenings, you've become friends as well. Um, and I respect each and every one of you. I cannot say enough good about this community who shows up. And I, I really thank you. So my only parting words are actually kind of ones that I applied when I took this position and it was to maintain a curiosity throughout the whole time. Recognizing that rarely would I understand all the nuances of any decision that I was making until I had the opportunity to learn from all the people who would be impacted by the decision that I made. So those who know me well know that I love Stoicism. Stoicism has, is always this, these little snippets that, that are guiding lights for me in really simple ways. So one of them that I pulled that I have often thought of is it is impossible for a man to learn when he thinks he already knows. And so coming with that attitude of like, I'm gonna come in here tonight and I'm gonna learn from people who do this full-time. Staff members who, like Hannah and Matt and Ryan and all of you, Rod and Lee and all of you in the back row. I didn't forget you, Jim. Jacob, all of you guys who, you do this full-time. We come in a couple nights a month and we make the decisions, but you are our guiding light. You are the wisdom. You help us understand the complexity of the decisions that we make. Um, and I so, so appreciate it. So once again, it is impossible for a man to learn when he thinks he already knows. So coming in here with curiosity, I encourage you guys to continue to come in here. Um, not knowing with the humility of learning when you get here. Um, and then the last thing that I'll say is another stoic bit of wisdom, and that is two ears and one mouth. If you do a lot more listening and a lot less talking, it's amazing how much I have gleaned in being here for nine years between planning and zoning and city council. So thank you all. Thanks for the patience in the times that I did think I knew, right? And had to learn or the, the challenges that, you know, the things I did wrong or the things that I could learn from. Uh, the humility of this position has been a, a really beautiful, beautiful, impactful change in how I look at the world. So thank you all for that.
You guys are great. It's been a true delight to start with you all.
Jonathan?
I will be neither brief. Nor, nor, uh, 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 stoic. Thank you. Yes. I want to start off because I didn't write a, a letter to organize my thoughts. I'm gonna ramble a little bit, but I want to give some advice for the new councillors coming in and maybe a little advice for the current councillors. You know, we have community documents, we have com-plan, confluence plans, development plans. Base your decision on these documents. These are documents that are going to guide you, that have guided this council, councils past and that should guide you going forward. You know, the, those plans, input from our wonderful volunteers on all of our boards and commissions should give everybody a really good idea of what direction this town should be and, and can be headed towards. Look at the whole community and what that means. Look at the Latino community, the younger community, high schoolers, twenty-somethings, thirty-somethings. I mean, this, this new council is gonna be like a lot of retired people. And they're all gonna be people who live in single-family houses. So it's, it's this group and your small group of people is not the community. So try to reach outside of, of your own social circle and try to see what has, the, the community has to offer and the feedback that it's trying to give you. You know, we have a lot of things that come before council, some small, some big. Don't be a community reactor, be a community leader. The people elected you to lead this community. We have these roadmaps, we have, you know, any decision that you are going to make, that's going to make people upset. It, it doesn't necessarily mean it's the right decision, but it's not a bad indicator. Don't have the, the masses come to council and say, I don't want this, I don't like this, this feels bad. And base a decision on that. You have to look at everybody and who that impacts. You know, um, if, if you took this job to be popular, I, I got some news. You, it's, it's, it's the wrong job. Leo McKinney was served in, was my predecessor in Ward Five. Steve Smith is going to precede me. And when he was up here giving these, you know, oh, goodbye and good night, after eight years of serving on council and I was sitting out there, uh, he said, this is the coolest thing I've ever done. This is, you know, eight years of serving the community. And then he said, well, other than like my wedding and the birth of my kids. But I, I echo that. I think it, it really is a fantastic thing that we are allowed to do for our community, that the community has entrusted us with. Our staff, former staff, um, you know, I go back a way. So I just gotta mention Terry Parch, Chief Wilson Tillitson, Robin Milliard, Jen Newton and, and certainly Deborah Figueroa, our city manager, previous city manager. Our current staff, Yvette, Steve, Carl, thank you so much, guys. Hannah, Ryan Gordon, Ryan Muse, Rod, Chief Darris. You, you guys, I, I wish I could talk about all the two hundred plus employees of the city, but I'm just gonna hit the people I deal with more directly and say thank you because you are the most professional, dedicated, uh, smart, fun uh, group of people I've really ever been around. And it's just been an honor. Council, past and present, um, you know, the former mayor Gamba, Todd Leahy, Steve Davis, Catherine Trogger, Jim Ingraham, Shelly Kyle, Rick Voorhees. Help shape who I am and the way I learned how to do this job. And so for them, I'm profoundly grateful. And then this council, uh, you know, I, I hopefully the other council's not watching. You're my favorite. Really, serving with you guys, um, you know, I keep, I get, keep getting asked, I'm sure you do too, Ingraham, like, what are you gonna miss? Is it gonna be sad? And I say it's bittersweet. And what I always say is it is sweet because I'll have some more time with my life back a little bit. But it's bitter because honestly, serving with you guys, specifically you guys, has been just fantastic. You know, even when we don't, uh, agree on the details, we absolutely agree on the larger vision. And I'm just, um, I'm so happy that, um, I'm so lucky that I got to serve at this time with you guys. And I wish I had a little bit more time with you guys. Every councillor I have ever witnessed who's ever served in this body has done so with honor and what they feel is in the best interest of this community. So community, when you don't agree with us, you know, I often say like, people can disagree with me ninety or can agree with me ninety-five percent of the time, but it's just that one time on that one issue and then I'm dead to them forever. Don't do that. Don't vilify the people who are spending so much time to help you guys out. Help the communities. It's, it's us and we're your neighbors. Everybody has served in a way that they felt is best for the community. Except Tony Hershey. And my family. Lastly, you know, I remember eight years ago getting the call, little over eight years ago, from Catherine Meyer Fletcher, who is a, uh, city clerk, saying, hey, congratulations, Jonathan, you've won. And I was in bed reading my daughter's story. They probably don't remember, but, uh, it was, it was so cool. So I, I put her on speaker, had her say it again. Uh, because I wanted them to understand that. And, uh, you know, it was. You know, they have done a lot. They've missed a lot of me. There's been a lot of performances, events, storytime tuck-ins, wedding, uh, anniversaries, birthdays that I've missed. So thank you for allowing me that time. Yeah, uh, you know, and speaking about proud, we have done a lot of great stuff in this town over the last, uh, two years, four years, eight years. You know, we have done short-term regulation, short-term rental regulations, which Marco loves. The tobacco tax and flavor ban, uh, we've done affordable housing and infrastructure tax is gonna set this community up well for the next twenty years. We've rebuilt South Midland. Uh, we're gonna hear a little bit about a groundbreaking on South Bridge, hopefully next year. Uh, we fought the mine from coming in. We have survived and thrived through the Grizzly Creek fire, which decimated our watershed. Uh, we dealt with I seventy being out because of floods. And we, we've had so many things come at this community, but we've also taken the opportunity to be so proactive. And so for that, um, I just, I think we, I got to just hit this like golden eight-year period. And I'm sure every council person thinks that. And I hope you guys think that too. So thank you. Thank you to you guys on council. Thank you to staff. Thank you to my family. And certainly thank you to the citizens who entrusted me and entrust us to serve you the best we can. We screw up. We absolutely do. But know that when we do, we're, we're hopefully doing it with a good heart that is hopefully informed, dedicated and, um, has the ability to be fallible, but at the same time, we want to always think, how can we do better? And so that's gonna be the charge of this new councils. How can we do better? Thank you very much. Peace out.
They needed this, they needed this moment.
Okay. We are going to take a moment to allow staff to make a couple comments about the two of us. So be gentle, be kind.
Way too late for that. Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Steve Boyd. I'm your city manager, which makes me part of staff. So a couple of things that I'd like to say on behalf of staff. I was hired as finance director twenty seventeen and I think councillor Godis, in my second meeting, you were sworn in, maybe it was my third. So we've been through a lot. And I've always appreciated you and Mayor Wussel. You guys have always believed in us. You've always stuck up for us, even when it was hard, and it was a couple of times. You guys have been steadfast in your support for our staff and this community. I can't tell you how much we appreciate that. We're gonna miss you. I have a gift for each of you. So if I could convince you to come out here real quick. Immediate issue.
Absolutely. We love it. Yeah.
Good evening, Council. Brianna Starbuck, your friendly public information officer. And not surprisingly, you stole all my talking points, uh, because you guys know exactly what to do and, uh, I, Jonathan, yep, we, this community has been through some cuckoo for Cocoa Puffs things. This community faces challenges that far larger communities are facing for our itty-bitty small-sized dang, we sure do go through emergencies, don't we? And never once, in the many times that I had the opportunity to put together little messages for you guys, did I worry a little bit about what you guys were gonna say out there because at the core of it is this community matters and caring about this community matters and caring that the voice of this community matters and that is what is at the heart of all the work that you guys did over these many years. Um, and as your, a staff member, as a longtime community member, I am extremely grateful to you both and can't wait for, uh, whatever fun adventures await ahead. I hope they are easier, but, uh, probably won't be and look forward to future grocery store run-ins.
Thank you. Thank you, Brianna. You've been amazing. We appreciate you. Thank you.
I'm gonna be much shorter than everybody else's. Um, I wanted to thank Jonathan for bringing the word robust to the council eight years ago. I think we all get a giggle out of it every time somebody says it, but that first few meetings, it was used a lot. Uh, really appreciate that. Um, I want to echo what Steve said. I don't, even my staff members realize how great this council is and how supportive you have been. And I'd say that I've been here for nine years and most of them have been here for thirty, twenty, thirty, thirty-five years. So this is the most support they've ever gotten out of a council, out of city management, uh, over the last four or five years. They just really appreciative of that. Um, so thank you for all of that. Um, and I want to thank Jonathan for, once again, actually, actually Ingrid too, for text messages and phone calls. It stumped me sometimes. It's every once in a while, I'll get one. I'm like, I don't know the actual answer to that question, but I will find it out for you. So I hope that those still come. Phone number's not changing. Uh, I'd really like to keep in touch with you too and, and good, you know, good luck with what you, all your free time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mo. We appreciate all you do for the city. If it takes more than like three minutes to tell every, like the community, how many departments you run, you're killing it.
And Mayor, Council, John Hassel, Deputy Chief, Police Department. I, I'm really impressed with the people that are able to get up here and have a speech memorized. Uh, I, I wrote mine down. So on behalf of the Police Department, we'd like to give a heartfelt and slightly sarcastic, uh, thank you to, uh, Jonathan and Ingrid.
Oh.
You're expecting me.
A moment of surprise. I actually drive the speed limit and things like that, so.
You've been our champions. You've been our budget approvers, our policy reviewers, and let's be honest, an occasional source of confusion. Through it all, you've had our backs, even sometimes when it was just a nudge to justify why we need one more patrol car that has seat warmers, cup holders and car play. Thank you for that. We truly appreciate the support, the listening ears and the brave faces you made every time we use the words inner jurisdictional task force and/or community oriented enforcement initiative. You may have heard that here or there. You sat through crime stats, quarterly reports and at least one PowerPoint with more than enough slideshow, slides. And for that, you deserve a medal. Or at least an app. Thanks for helping us improve our public safety, even if we never figure out how to stop people from calling nine-one-one because their wi- their neighbor's wifi, uh, password, name offensive, offensive them. So as you ride off into the sunset of your council careers, probably to a quieter life of not reading four hundred-page packets on a Tuesday night, just know that we'll miss your leadership, your humor and your ability to nod as if you totally understand our dog sense of humor. Thank you. Stay safe and remember, we still know your license plates. Thank you for all you guys have done.
Steve's making them all do this.
I know, it's totally. He's gonna buy him pizza for doing all these talk, these speeches tomorrow.
Uh, Council, Hannah Clausman, Community and Economic Development Director. And I'm going to take up the next two hours of your time reviewing all the things that we've done together over the last eight years. Buckle in. No, I won't do that to you because I have taken up so much of your time over these years and you've been really great through all of it. I feel like I've grown up as a planner in front of you. And I'm very happy to be standing here as the director and I wish you guys both the best and I will track you down and I still expect phone calls as well. But thank you so much.
I think I'm the closer. Uh, I'm here to make sure that we go past eight o'clock. I just wanted to say that I, um, you know, I've served in this role for very long. And what the two of you faced during your tenure on council and especially as mayors have been the most challenging and difficult times that I think any of us can remember the city facing. Uh, from fire, flood, pandemic, uh, and to the mine issue that still goes on today. And what I really wanted to say thank you is what I, I don't know, a lot of people know, uh, the work that goes on particularly in the mayor's seat on so many of these issues. The time it takes, the strategy, the tactics, the meetings, the phone calls to elected officials, sacrificing personal time to fight what is really not a very public battle oftentimes, but one that is critically important for all of us. And you guys both did that with great humor uh, and with fantastic insight and. And you guys both did that with great humor, and with fantastic insight and good instincts. And you can all ask Jonathan what it was like to meet with Joe Nagus one morning in DC. And so I have a lot of fond memories of doing that, and it would not have been possible without the two of you. I also want to make one other shout out to Mayor Wusso, that I think is something that is easy to forget because of her effortless leadership in the center, is that go out and look at the wall of photographs, and there are two women on that wall. And Ingrid, you're one of them, and it makes me very proud that you are, so thank you very much.
So, I know this is totally out of order.
Yeah, it's out of order, but you can come up to the mic, let's.
There you go, to the very end.
So I'm Suzanne Stewart, and I'm not the head of anything, except that I think Ingrid and Jonathan's families are here, and they both deserve, I think, to stand up and take a hand.
Mike just walked out.
Yeah, I mean, they need some recognition too, don't you think?
Thank you, Suzanne, that was totally warranted. I don't know how many times my kids have been picked up in the last nine years, between planning and zoning and city council, where I'm on the phone and I'm like, get in the car, and they roll with it, or my husband has to deal with my constant checking of messages. And so I really appreciate you all, like you guys, being a public servant is something that I'm really passionate about, but being a family member of a public servant is something you didn't ask for, but that you get to grow through. So thank you guys so much, I appreciate you all, and I love you so much. Okay, this is it, we're good. I'm, I'm gonna call for recess, and then we are going to shift the name tags. We're gonna swear in the three new members, and then I'm taking that family and a few friends, and we're walking out the door.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna stay for the South Ridge update, because I really want to know, but then I will join you afterwards.
Yep, see, I have a few minutes.
I will call to order the second half of tonight's meeting, and I lost my agenda. I will take yours, thank you very much for just the time being. I'll, I'll share it right, right again. So, I'm taking over for a couple of items tonight, since Ingrid has left us, I'm Mayor Pro Tem, so I will continue the meeting. And the next item on the agenda is swearing in of new council members. So I would like to welcome Steve Smith, Ray Schmal, and Dave Townsley to the council. Thank you guys for stepping up to the plate, thank you guys for running a campaign, thank you guys for filling out the petitions and getting your signatures, and, and, and welcome to the dais. With that, I think Ryan is gonna swear you in, and you want to do one at a time, or all together, or?
Let's do one at a time.
Okay, where do you want to start, left or right?
Let's start with.
There you go.
Steve.
Perfect, Steve, yes, please come up front. He's coming, he's going. There's two ways, all, all roads lead to the front. That's right.
Repeat after me, I, Steve Smith.
I, Steve Smith.
Upon my oath.
On my oath.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
Solemnly swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
Constitution of the United States of America.
The State of Colorado.
State of Colorado.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Glenwood Springs.
The Charter and ordinances of the City of Glenwood Springs.
And will faithfully perform the duties of the office of the City Councilor.
Faithfully perform the duties of the City Councilor.
Representing Ward Five, upon which I am about to enter.
Representing Ward Five, which I am about to enter.
All right, by virtues of the powers vested in me by this Glenwood Springs Municipal Charter, I hereby certify that the foregoing oath of office was subscribed and sworn before me the 17th day of April 2025 by Steve Smith, City Councilor, representing Ward Five.
Excellent.
No, no, you get, you get the repeat, welcome to the dais, Steve.
Thank you. Thank you, Ryan, and the next one? Dave?
I, David Townsley.
I, David Townsley.
Upon my oath.
Upon my oath.
Do solemnly swear that I.
Do solemnly swear that I.
Will support the constitutions of the United States of America.
Support the constitutions of the United States of America.
The State of Colorado.
State of Colorado.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Glenwood Springs.
Charter and the ordinances of the City of Glenwood Springs.
And will faithfully perform the duties of the office of City Councilor.
Will faithfully perform the duties of the offices of the City Councilor.
Representing the city at large, upon which I am about to enter.
Representing the city at large, upon which I am about to enter.
By virtue of the powers vested in me by the City of Glenwood Springs Municipal Charter, I hereby certify that the foregoing oath of office was subscribed. I hereby certify that the foregoing oath of office was subscribed and sworn to me before the seventeenth day of April, two twenty-five by David Townsley, City Councillor, representing the city at large. Congratulations.
One more.
I, Ray Schmal.
I, Ray Schmal.
Upon my oath, do solemnly swear that I.
Upon my oath, do solemnly swear that I.
Will support the constitution of the United States of America.
Will support the constitution of the United States of America.
The state of Colorado.
The state of Colorado.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Glenwood Springs.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Glenwood Springs.
And will faithfully perform the duties of the office.
And will faithfully perform the duties of the office.
Of city councillor.
Of city councillor.
Representing Ward two upon which I'm about to enter.
Representing Ward two upon which I'm about to enter.
All right. By the virtue of the powers invested in me by the Glenwood Springs Municipal Charter, I hereby certify that the foregoing oath of office was subscribed and sworn to me before on the seventeenth day of April, two thousand twenty-five by Ray Schmal, City Councillor, representing Ward two.
Excellent.
We have voice.
Thank you, Ryan. Uh, congratulations to the three of them again. Welcome to the dais. It's official now. Fantastic. Okay, moving on to a selection of a mayor and a mayor pro tem. And usually how we do this is the council appoints a mayor and a mayor pro tem. Uh, it's a very simple process. We look for nominations and then we usually get it done by a voice vote. So that said, um, I'm entertaining a motion for nomination and I think we have councillor Shacter, please.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I am going to part from, or I need to be green, I guess.
Oh, did you push the button?
I'm not green.
Uh-oh.
Now I'm green. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I am nominating Marco Dame, who has served and led the city formally and informally with great dedication for decades, not years, not months, not days, for decades, nominating Marco Dame as mayor. And at the same time, I am nominating Ingrid, uh, Ingrid Erin Zelinski, who has broken through the new ceiling of city councillor with so much speed and grace and community goodwill and taught us so much, nominating her as mayor pro tem. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, I guess. Um, can I get a second? Councillor Wymer.
You have my enthusiastic second on both issues.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Is there anything else before we take a vote? Then let's call for the question. No, let's, let's do it. Let's do it via the, uh, the button. Yep, system will go from there.
Congratulations.
Okay, I guess it's my turn to say something. Well, I got very big shoes to fill. Um, we just had two excellent former mayors go to Zenwoso, uh, say goodbye to us tonight, but, um, I, I'd like to just say a couple of things. And one is that I am committed to Glenwood Springs. I, I do intend to bring or continue on what we have started two years ago. Uh, we have increased our communications with the town. We have been more transparent. We have uh, listened better and I have full, full confidence that this council will carry this forward and, and I, I hope, um, we can improve in areas we're, we're lacking some, a little bit and, uh, anyway, I'm a little bit surprised, but I had a feeling, so I didn't prepare anything. But anyway, I am thankful, uh, for this. I'm honored. Um, I will do the best I can. I want to hear from you guys uh, from town, from the community. I, I have one, one small favor to ask the community. And that is, please contact me via the city email. There's a couple of reasons for this. I'd like to have a written record of our conversation. Um, I also would like to have it in writing so I can pass it on easier to our senior staff if issues arise. And I know sometimes the need arises in the middle of the night. And yes, I know you all are important and I mean that, but I do not want a phone call or text at two o'clock in the morning. So please use the email. It is citycouncil@cogs.us. And with that, I was reading a little, uh, quote the other day and it was said by Teddy Roosevelt and he said, do the best you can with what you have where you are. And I think that's going to be my motto for the next two years. So thank you very much. Excellent. Thank you. Um, moving on, uh, Ryan, do you need another minute to get everything ready?
We're good.
Okay, before we jump into this, uh, anybody from the council have a couple of words or comments? And I see councillor Smith, your mic should be on.
Thank you very much. I, I know this has been a speech fest this evening, but, but I'm, I'm pretty enthused about this remarkable invitation that, that my neighborhoods have offered. So just a few words if that's okay. I'm honored and humbled to be here and a little bit scared. This is going to be remarkable and I will do my best to contribute constructively in this new task. I thank, thank everyone who has been part of getting here, including campaign volunteers, very supportive friends and already a bank of professionals in the city staff who have begun the orientation and training on how this works. As Mayor Wusso noted in her newspaper column this week, work like this is always about we more than it is about I. I thank Mayor Wusso and Councilman Gottes for their many years of service. I will try to bring levels of energy, attention to detail and care for community similar to their examples. Ingrid's service as the second ever woman mayor in Glenwood Springs hundred and thirty-seven years prompted me to bring along a portrait of my namesake adopted aunt Marion. The first ever woman mayor in Glenwood Springs. This is to remind me that Marion also showed all of us what kindness, thoughtful listening, smart deliberation and imagination can render. That this kind of service is guided really by many principles. But those for me fall into two basic categories, one geographic, one chronological. I was selected from the southwest neighborhoods, but I will be serving and caring about the places in all the town and the people who live there. As a fellow newbie here reminded me recently, it will be important to weigh decisions during the next four years by thinking about the effects they will have over the next forty years. Motivational writer William Arthur Ward reminds us, before you speak, listen. Before you write, think. Before you spend, earn. Before you invest, investigate. Before you criticize, wait. Before you quit, try. All that to say, pay attention and deliberately so. Early twentieth century philosopher Simone Weil wrote, "Attention is the rarest and purest form of generosity." On we go then with generosity, patience and thoughtful sharing of this important task. Thank you for the invitation.
Excellent. Thank you, Steve. That was great. Uh, any other comments? Yeah, I see. Councillor Schmal, please. You're good?
Um, thank you for the opportunity to serve. I look forward to helping everyone who tries, tries so hard to make this city work. I hope to help all of you make it work better. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Ray. And, yep. Councillor Townsley.
Well, not to be left out down here.
There you go.
I'll keep it short. You know, when Ingrid left tonight, she said, you've got two ears and one mouth. Then I'll try to do that the best I can and listen to people that have been here, that work here, that know here. People that have been in the city for a long time, people that just got to the city. And try to keep the comments and the, and the mouth shut and the ears open and see what we can learn and really looking forward to the job.
Excellent. Thank you. Anything else? Great. We're moving into actions or presentations for tonight. And since we have a new council, uh, sitting here, we need to, uh, go back to disclosure of council conflicts of interest. Anybody have a, a conflict of interest that has been seated? We'll see none. Excellent. That brings us to a, uh, Southbridge and micro transit update. And I think that's Ryan Gordon for us.
Uh, good evening, council. Yes, uh, Ryan Gordon, your city engineer. I'm going to pull this up somehow. Okay. Well, I got a couple of things on the list to present to you, but, but first I'm going to dive into Southbridge and, and certainly this will be a pretty quick update. Um, there will be future opportunities. In fact, a work session coming up with, with council to discuss in depth Southbridge. I'm quite a complex subject. Um, but real quick, an update on Southbridge. Um, we are working through the design, our design, our ninety percent design from our consultant Jacobs Engineering should be done sometime in the first week of May. Uh, we, we should at that point have a real clear understanding of, of cost and where we're going. Um, so at that point, it's going to be a, a, a better opportunity to really dig into what's going on. Uh, along with that, the, and, and new environmental assessment, which includes a revised noise study that is supposed to be issued and completed sometime mid-May. And again, that'll give a lot of clarity in where we are and where we're going. Um, as, as you may or may not, uh, know, some of the new council members, um, um, one of the big issues with the noise study is if a sound wall would be, um, federally required. Or, 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 or to be voted on by, by the impacted residents. Um, the results of that should again be, be forthcoming with that May issuance of the environmental assessment. Um, in the meantime, we're continuing to work on, um, looking at, uh, acquiring right of way and the permanent easements required for the project, also coordination with various other entities. For example, the airport and working with them, um, and kind of moving the project along. So pretty brief update, you know, looking for, uh, back to you council for any questions. But like I said, again, I think it warrants a pretty more in-depth work session. Once we get the ninety percent set and really dig into the details. So at that, I'll turn it over for questions for council in Southbridge.
All right. Excellent. Thank you, Ryan. Any questions to, uh, city engineer? We'll start with councillor Zelinski, please.
So I just have a quick question that was posed to me. Um, the sound study, would those impacts be carried down to the neighborhood that goes a little bit further? Like, you know, I'm thinking of Park West because we were studying the impacts, you know, in the Cardiff Glen neighborhood. But then there's still homes on both sides of Midland for about another two mi-, oh, maybe a mile.
Right, right. So, so the answer is, is no. So in, in one of the reasons why with the Southbridge project, there's a very defined limit of the project, which eventually starts at the four mile roundabout and, and continues southward. So the areas between the four mile roundabout and say Park West neighborhood, even further north to the twenty-seventh street roundabout are not included in the study nor the impact area. So therefore the project essentially limits what we can do. Now that's not to say that we wouldn't be trying to mitigate issues in problems that arise because of Southbridge, but as part of the Southbridge project in the funding that we have, um, you know, you know, uh, applied for a grant and whatnot cannot be spent beyond those boundaries.
The scope is finite. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Smith.
Thank you, Ryan, for tracking this in such extensive detail. Um, I'm fa- familiar with these kinds of updates because Ryan bring, has brought them to the transportation commission a few times where I've been serving. One of the details we've discussed there is a particular detail that I know maybe beyond the level of technical specificity that the council usually addresses, but I, I want to kick at it nonetheless. There is a feature, the last I knew, um, that includes a two-lane exit turn off of highway, off of northbound highway eighty-two onto the new Southbridge Road, which is a one-lane road and a one-lane bridge. Um, that worries me just because of that seeming invitation for immediate bottlenecking. But in the bigger picture, it seems to run a counter to the city's consistent intention and promise that Southbridge Airport Road and the length of Midland would not become a regional commuter ter- route, would not become a bypass. This two-lane exit feels like the entrance to a bypass. As Ryan has explained in transportation commission meetings, and I think to this, this body as well, uh, our staff has very professionally argued this point with the Colorado Department of Transportation counterparts. Our engineering and public works representatives have pushed and pushed because of this concern uh, and how counter it is to the, there are many other design measures that that our own staff have been putting in to slow down and to discourage that bypass effect. I would love to see this city council have the back of our professional staff and declare in whatever format is appropriate, uh, that the city council itself opposes this two-lane exit feature and the ramifications it, it would have for neighborhoods and the broad, broader community. Uh, so I guess I pose that initially as a question, maybe a trio of questions on protocol, how we go about such a thing. And, and maybe back to you, really ultimately to you, Ryan. What's up with that current feature? And is there a, a channel if we were to give you some support to get rid of that?
Yeah, so, um, there's a lot of history in, in those decisions. And so, um, you know, I've been in my role now for two years when I, when I came aboard. A lot of the Southbridge project was, was relatively set in stone. And we've gone back and pushed really hard against CDOT in a variety of things. You know, we can talk about the tunnel under the runway, the type of bridge, right? We've made some very, very significant changes over the past eighteen months to the effect of about thirty million dollars in cost savings. CDOT controls highway eighty-two, as, as you're well aware of. Um, and we made the push to reduce or eliminate one of those lanes. And so the pushback we've received from CDOT is a lot of the traffic numbers and a lot of the safety concerns. Um, we are continuing to have those discussions, but, but really I, I, I think that ship has sailed somewhat. Um, I think what we've talked about internally and what we're going to engage with CDOT and have the conversation is, you know, while we have two lanes off of eighty-two, and again, it, it, it leads to believe that it is a bypass and it certainly is not a bypass in the eyes of, of, of staff. And we've, we've corrected CDOT in that nomenclature every time we, we possibly can. One idea is to build two turn lanes initially, um, and, and then stripe one as a no, a no-go lane, right? So basically I have one lane to start with, but then have the ability to expand to two lanes if the traffic numbers are, are recognized and realized that we actually do need two. And I, and I will point out a couple of other things is as you take two lanes that turn off of eighty-two, if that's what it ultimately is, the bridge itself is only two lanes, so one lane each direction. So there is somewhat of a bottleneck, but also there is a constriction. And so while we have the storage capacity on eighty-two, the capacity of the Southbridge roadway in the bridge itself is somewhat reduced. Um, in order to comply, um, and, and, and make sure that the road itself does not become that bypass, there's a couple of major features that we've built into it. So um, in the process of, of, of kind of redesigning some of the major features, instead of having that runway, uh, the tunnel on the runway, excuse me, that really was designed. designed for a forty-five mile an hour highway speed, we now have a twenty-five mile an hour curve. So as a driver, you actually have to physically slow down and, and make a, a, a turn as opposed to just flying down the road. Additionally, we have a couple of other elements towards the end, towards the um four-mile roundabout just before, we have another traffic circle. Um, that again will help to slow down vehicles by having to navigate through a traffic circle. It, it, it's not quite a roundabout because the center will be paved over, so it's more of a traffic circle, but it's the same idea. You actually have to slow down to, to move. Plus, we're planning in a couple of those raised pedestrian crossings. Um, so, so think about the raised crossings over at Sopra Salomone. Those are a couple of ones that we're looking at. At number one, at um the historic Coke Ovens, and then one kind of more court towards the, the Cardiff Glen neighborhood. Um, tho- those items should really help to slow down traffic. Um, you know, also this, the, the area will be signposted at twenty-five miles an hour. Um, so the combination of those, we, we think will help to slow down traffic. Um, I, I, I've said to council many other times, you know, we are not gonna be able to dictate where people drive. Um, we are hopefully to, to dictate how people, um, not, not the amount of people driving, but how they drive, right? So speed is really the critical one for both noise nuisance um in, in public safety. But I, um, you know, we are continually working with CDOT to try to work in better elements of the project, and we haven't quite um given up some of these items. What I do think we are gonna lose that argument on the two left turn lanes, but I do think we have the ability um, to, to make it a little bit better for, for us. And, and, and one last thing, we are still very much contemplating and, and going to include that Southbridge will have a toll on it or the ability to have a toll. Um, and just quick clarification, that, that toll may start at zero and may not. But if we don't evaluate a toll and the impacts of the toll, we can never have a toll in the future. And um, I just want to reiterate that again, that the term bypass, we have, have, have beaten out of CDOT. They have kind of come to the conclusion that, yeah, we don't feel this is a bypass. And so all these elements in, in the main um title and the guts of our, our major grant that we received from FHWA, a bypass was never mentioned once. This is primarily evacuation route, and that's how the city intends to operate it. I, I don't know if I actually answered entirely your question, councillor Smith, but that is.
It's okay. Yes, you did offer very helpful information. And I happily affirm the efforts you have done in the other design details and this, the stalwart negotiations and patient work you've done with the CDOT staff. I also recognize that CDOT has done a lot for this town in recent decades. And working with them and even pushing back on something like this needs to be done respectfully and with appreciation for that longstanding partnership. I also agree that CDOT has authority and responsibility for Highway eighty-two. Very respectfully, they do not have authority or, or management responsibility for Midland and Airport Road. And if they're going to, to help cause an effect on those roads, it's beyond their authority. That's where I was, I wanted to have your back. And again, thank you and all the public works and engineering staff. And encourage you not to wave goodbye to that sailed ship and find some, some additional discussions on that. Again, uh, welcome any, any advice from my fellow council members on how we can back them up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Smith. I think we'll just see how this goes. I have a feeling. Instead of trying to figure something out on the fly here, um, if, if you feel like you need something more official, you can always come to us, but at this point, I think you have this completely under control.
Yeah, and, 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 and we will go back and we will push again and, and see where we can go and have that discussion with CDOT. We'll report back.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Uh, councillor Small.
Uh, so Ryan, do the traffic count study not support a single northbound off-ramp off of eighty-two, or is it a physical limitation? Is CDOT anticipating more traffic than what the whole roadway has been designed for?
Um, so the, the, the traffic studies that we've done, and, and, and to be clear, that it, what's, what's ironic about the Southbridge project, it's been a long and around for so long that the first twenty-year traffic projection horizon has come and gone essentially. So the initial traffic study, we have reached that twenty-year projection. We redid the analysis and saw um a relatively large reduction in the traffic volumes. But CDOT's perspective is that the numbers um border on either the one lane or the two lane. And so from their perspective is that in order to, you know, let's say dig once type of thing, do one big project, that it should be a two-lane, um, a, a two-lane turn. So it was, it was the, the, the traffic numbers in CDOT's mind supported that analysis and that, that need for two lanes.
So the conclusion is what we've designed is under capacity already?
Well, the, the.
Is that, did I get that right?
Generally speaking, if I can restate it, right? So, so the design of the two lanes for that twenty-year projection, so what we've taken now is, is new traffic projections as of twenty twenty-four, projected them twenty years into the future. In that condition, CDOT has said, hey, look, you definitely need, we think you need two-turn lanes to support that, that growth.
Uh, one, one more question, if I may, uh, exploring the possibility of the Midland being a toll road. Is that not extremely complicated with federal funding?
So we, we've, we've been working on this for, for a little over a year. And so the toll, just to be clear, would be on the bridge itself and not on Midland. And there is some complications, given that we have federal funding, but we've worked through that with FHWA. So the, so in, in, FHWA is the grantor of the big grant, the Rural Surface Transportation Grant that we received. Um, the stipulations that, that are, are, is the toll has to be evaluated as part of the E A process, the environmental assessment process. And then, and what we've shown through that process is um the city of Glenwood Springs, this would not be an overburdensome impact to the city. And so part of that is how and who we would toll. So people in Glenwood Springs would be exempt from, from the toll primarily because, um, you know, we are the people impacted from the new bridge and the new traffic and are the primary funders of the bridge. So when we look under that and under the guidelines from FHWA, the toll is not, um, i- i- is allowed in, in their perspective.
Okay, thank you. Um, councillor Shacter, please.
Thank you, Ryan. So much work preceding most of us here on the dais. Um, I think a workshop will help sooner rather than later, it sounds like. When is the final date that we have to make a decision about the toll? Contracting for it, getting it implemented and determining what the toll be. What, what kind of timeline are we there assuming the whole project goes through?
Yeah, um, we are, we are analysis, putting in the analysis, a toll and a non-told situation. So there is no decision needed per se on tolling versus non-tolling. Um, the technology has, has matured quite substantially since we remember stopping at a toll booth and tossing nickels and quarters into a bucket. Um, the technology is very much more remote-based. So these are license plate readers that, that, that control the toll. So the implementation and the cost of installing or implementing the toll system is very minimal. Where we don't have major high gantry, um, you know, um, crane, uh, signs and whatnot that you see in, on, on I seventy anymore. The technology is very less intrusive than it is. Um, there are examples on I twenty-five in downtown Denver that you see. Um, again, it's a very easy process to put in the tolling equipment. Um, and, and plus, uh, the, the, the charging of the toll and all that. And so um, again, if we decide to do tolling, it is not a moving mountains to do it. It is included right now in the design.
And then one more thing, and councillor Smith reminds me, I mean, the whole purpose is mentioned originally for Southbridge was for safety and then subsequently to alleviate, alleviate, alleviate some of the stress on the twenty-seventh street roundabout.
That's correct.
Always designed for more local traffic rather than a bypass. I just hope we keep that in mind. And yes, CDOT is a partner, but they also have cross purposes with Glenwood in terms of moving traffic. So I hope maybe in our workshop that we keep that in mind and use whatever influence we can to make sure those priorities are kept up. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Moving on to councillor Solinsky, please.
So I appreciate all the comments, and I just was thinking about, you know, talking about that two-lane turning lane um off of eighty-two, and I'm thinking about uh leaving eighty-two and turning onto one thirty-three. And that is a two-lane that goes into a one-lane. And so I think we can visually look at that, um, look at the distances and see if those are similar as we're doing kind of our analysis and, and um becoming comfortable with the scope of this. Uh, but I do see how that works and how that takes, sorry, alleviates the traffic on eighty-two. Those long backups that we see at Buffalo Valley right now with people trying to get off, you can already see where it presents a dangerous situation. So I think that I can recognize the value of that as long as we keep that two lanes through our neighborhoods and through our community.
Hey, thank you. Any other questions? See none, just a quick one, and I'm more curious about the federal funding.
So you and I are in the same boat. Um.
Excellent.
We are, have no more clarity than we were yesterday, last week or last month. Um, I, I know just from headlines that perhaps the funding is unfrozen and then it's frozen and it's being evaluated. Um, our contacts both at CDOT, who are administering the grant, and whoever's left at FHWA, which are few, um, don't have any clarity either. So we are proceeding with um sort of the knowledge that we are moving ahead. And um, if we come to a point where things stop because of something, then we will have a project ready to go. Um, just a quick overall timeline. Um, again, the ninety percent of the drawings may, hundred percent of those drawings, um, um, beginning of October. Uh, the perfect scenario is we'd go out to bid either sometime in December of this year or maybe early January, depending on that works. Um, at least now our obligated date, meaning the date the project has to be bid to get our funds. And again, I don't know if that change is due to the funds being frozen, is September, essentially September one of twenty twenty-six. So I guess we have some time, but we will see how that all plays out.
Okay, since, since it was on the agenda, I was hoping you had good news. That was it. Uh, excellent. Anybody, uh, since this is a, since we take comment on everything now, which is a, a good thing. Uh, anybody online? Merrill Glickman, your hand is up. Can we please promote her to panelist? And your microphone is off.
Okay.
There we go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You got three minutes, please.
Okay. Well, as many of you know, I have been working on this project and talking about it with the um council representing Cardiff Two. I'm on the board of directors. Excuse me. And um, I just, so I've been educating the board on, uh, the council, rather, on a number of factors that I think have not been presented. And I intend to do that again, since so many of the people are new. Um, also, it sounds like per Steve's comment about the two lanes and, and the ongoing discussion that this going, could be a lot of dis- uh, a lot of traffic. And we don't know that yet, right? So first question, how can we do a study based on revised lower numbers? Um, without knowing the actual traffic and the actual situations? I do not believe, I believe there is more traffic and my commu- the people I represent believe there is going to be more traffic, not less traffic. Um, because if, as I will show you in the future, there have been so many people talking about this being a bypass. It's true that since the project started, we're not talking about it as a bypass. But that's the only thing that has changed, how we've talked about it. The numbers haven't changed. Now, um, I have, this is a little uncomfortable, uh, because Steve Smith is a neighbor, but I hope you will recuse yourself, Steve. Um, and Heather, when it comes to the discussion of the wall decisions, given your prior contributions uh to the council. Um, we're talking about the sound wall. Um, here's why. As you know, you and your wife have taken the position of opposing a sound wall for a variety of reasons. One being that it will spoil your view, the sound will bounce, which is true, it would, and I am not in favor for that. And another, that there will not be much traffic. So I'm really questioning that, because nothing I've found in all my uh factual uh documentation is that there will be more traffic. In fact, um, the county, Garfield County, won't build any more houses. They don't think there's enough bandwidth as it is to build more now. So as soon as this happens, they're gonna be building again. Um, s- some of your objections, Steve, are valid and some have been proven by more than this year of, of study and facts. But I want to remind you that you're one home and we are, uh, there are a hundred and fifty-four homes and probably more families than that in the communities. So.
You got ten seconds, please wrap up.
So the board has spoken, and I'll be talking about this, and we do support a toll because then things change.
Your time is up. It's a beautiful sound, but can we, can we, okay. How do we turn it off? Excellent. Well, thank you, uh, uh, Merrill, for your comments and always insightful also for the new council that sits here tonight. Um, is there any additional, I'm just gonna talk right through it. Is there any additional questions to uh Ryan at this point? Maybe we'll give it a second to see if we can uh stop this. No, I was hoping. Yeah, right. When in doubt, kick it.
Sorry, Mayor, that worked out.
There you go. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. All good. Nice little break. Uh, councillor, uh, Townsley, please.
Ryan, and, and I don't need an answer to this tonight, but I just, as we're new and looking for background and whatnot, when we do a work session, would love to kind of be brought up to speed as to what our interaction has been with the county, since if it's truly a safety issue. Having lived at four mile before, those are the people we're helping. That's a county thing. You know, where are we with county wanting to help fiscally, not wanting to help? So if I could get some background on that at some point, not necessarily tonight.
Excellent. Thank you. And I was just informed that I cut public comment short. So anybody else from the public like to come forward, please? Stranger? Please state your name and whether you live in the city or not.
Jonathan Gotis, ten seventy-one Park West Drive. I am a resident of the city. Thank you very much. Um, congratulations, Mayor Dane, Mayor Pro Tim Solinsky. I'm excited to live in a city served uh under your guys' leadership. Um, a couple of questions. One, I think councillor Solinsky. Um, yeah, the idea that this project is certainly from Airport Road, two eighty-two, yes, that makes sense. I think there will be impacts further on. So whether it's a part of this actual project or not, I would uh ask council to evaluate when those things uh maybe bleed out outside of the actual project areas. Um, Rural Surface Transportation Grant, um, I also serve as a regional grants navigator for Northwest COG, has not been impacted in other communities, or there's not been any um, notice of funding revoke, revocation at all. There has been for other funds, but not the Rural Surface Transportation. So as um, a- as far as I know, in my role, we are good on that so far. I am much more worried about tariffs and what the price is gonna do to the overall project, but we just don't know what that is. Um, I also think that, that, that when we talk about uh raised walks and roundabouts and twenty-five mile speed limit, the toll serves as both a significant deterrent potential and as a fundraising mechanism. It is very expensive, as you know, councillor Small, to maintain elevated surfaces, whether it's viaducts or bridges. We're gonna need that money. We're also gonna need potentially money to close the funding gap that we have. So that's not an insignificant piece, but I think the, the big stick that we have, if it costs a dollar to go across to take that shortcut through our community, councillor Smith, that might not discourage a lot of people. If it's five dollars, I bet that traffic's going to come to a halt pretty quick. And so I think that that is the one thing, we can't very easily just throw out some more speed humps or roundabouts, but we can adjust that to adjust the traffic. So thank you very much, Ryan. Uh, appreciate all the work you're doing on that.
Okay. Thank you for your comments, and I forgot to remind you, you had three minutes. I thought that would have been funny, but I missed it. So anyway. All good. Thank you. Thank you, Jonathan. Uh, anybody else? All right. We'll see none. Thank you, everybody. We'll move into micro transit.
Thank you, Ryan.
So, so actually, actually, Mayor, I'm going to step into kind of a project update. I thought it'd be appropriate to give um everybody an update of where we are. We, we did this back in January. Um, we're sitting here in, in, in April, and so these are all the projects that we have going on. That is share a screen. Holy cow, look at that. Sharing screen. Oh, boy. Oh, boy. Muse? What is going on here? Can't be this difficult. Oh, there we go. Did you share?
No. It's a fair project with someone else.
Yeah, go, oh. Hello. Ah ha. You think I've never done this before? There we go. There we go.
Perfect.
All right. Apologize for the technical challenges. Okay, these are the projects that we're working on. Colors. I've threatened to have multiple colors. I've added one more color for councils. Green, green is done. How about that?
Nice.
One, one project that we started already completed. So this is the Wolfson Road from East Meadows Drive to the rec center. We have a sidewalk that has been completed. I got some great photos to show you in a second, but that one was started and completed. So we're already working away, chipping away on this project list. So red are projects that are construction projects of this year. And I'll start in the upper left-hand corner and move around. I'm gonna kind of go quickly. So please, if you have questions, um, note them and I can answer them at at a later date. Not a later date, later time, excuse me. So up in the Cedar Crest neighborhood, we're looking to do some small drainage improvements to kind of help with better drainage for that neighborhood. We're looking to do that this summer when we have, um, kind of a group of smallish asphalt and concrete projects. The Whitewater Park pedestrian crossing project, so that's at Deveraux and Midland. We have an FMLD grant that we received, um, end of, end of, uh, two thousand and twenty-four. That project is slated to start in the fall. We tried to get it done earlier this year, but timing just didn't work out. That includes a pedestrian crossing for river users to safely cross the road plus additional, um, bank reinforcement to prevent, um, further erosion of the river. We have, uh, starting April twenty-first, so that's Monday, the Wolfson Road from East Meadows, um, to Midland. Uh, so that's a full rebuild of the road in certain spots in a mill and overlay. So this is in front of the rec center. Um, I have some other diagrams to show you as well, some of the the detour enclosures. But that road, uh, desperately needs to be repaired. It also includes some concrete work, both at Midland. That apron is severely cracked and then plus the rebuild of a, uh, bus station. Or I should say the bus stop is right now a pole in the ground. So we're actually gonna do a more official bus stop with, uh, benches in a, in a, in a shelter. The Oasis Creek Drainage Repair. So earlier this year, I guess it was actually end of last year, Public Works took on an, an, an exercise to uncover, unbury and unclog the Oasis Creek, uh, culvert. It was a six by six culvert that probably has never been cleaned. It was clogged it to the point where in runoff, water would spill over and run down Highway six and twenty-four until it found an outlet. We thought this was gonna be a relatively simple process. Um, it was nowhere near a simple process. Months and months and months later, we finally have jammed through a thirty-inch pipe just to get some positive drainage. We discovered that that six by six constricts down to a three by three or a three by six culvert. Three by six culvert. So we have a, a constriction that was chock full of everything you can imagine. People's chopped lumber, leaves, twigs, logs. Addition that that other culvert section at three by six, we've discovered is collapsed. So we need to go in there and do a, a much bigger project. So we're working with, um, a consultant to design a way to get down. Unfortunately, it's about eighteen feet down, um, in between Donigan and Highway six and twenty-four. So we're trying to evaluate what that is. But again, that's gonna be a design project and and hopefully some work later this year. Um, under construction here over on Sixth Street is one of our big projects that started last year, continuing this year. So Sixth Street in North Landing, um, that project is continuing and and should be generally completed later this year. We have a bathroom facility that's somewhat delayed because it's, um, being constructed off-site and brought on that will be installed, um, beginning of twenty twenty-six. So, um, that is new, new road, new sewer, new water, new storm drain, um, a full rebuild of the road and reinventing Sixth Street into a much more pedestrianized zone. Um, over here, block forty-four, which is the, the alleyway, uh, behind, uh, springs and docks. We are repaving that from con, um, from asphalt to concrete and putting in new storm drain. We're also undergrounding all the overhead electric, um, again, making that really a, a, a connection between Bethel Plaza under the bridge, um, through to Cooper. We did block forty-five, which is the next block to the east behind the Maxwell Anderson last year. Turned out really nice and again, added storm. So that should be wrapping up mid-May-ish this year with the completion of of the lights. Um, we have a great overhead lighting system, which again extends and pulls visitors from downtown over to Cooper, Cooper Avenue. Uh, Lincolnwood Drive, um, the, the last half of Lincolnwood Drive, we are working on it now. And that should be complete by June first. In fact, we have all the curb and gutter poured. We have asphalt coming, I believe, next Friday, a week from tomorrow. So that's a project that we started just a couple of weeks ago and completing that. So my next project update, that will turn green. And I'll have some great pictures to show you as well. Another big project, so Blake Avenue Phase Two. Phase one was last year, phase two this year, which incorporates and reconstructs all of Twenty-third Street from Highway D two, um, to to Blake and then from uh, and then Blake Avenue from twenty-first, uh, twenty-third to twenty-first. That includes a new sewer line, new water line, new storm, um, um, brand new roadway, brand new curb and gutter and a brand new multi, multi-use path, an eight-foot path on the north side. So this is the side of Alpine Bank, which will connect, um, basically the, the crossing at Grand Avenue over the Rio Grande Trail, but up to Blake Avenue, where last year we installed an eight-foot wide shared use path, um, from Twenty-third Street to the Twenty-seventh Street B R T. Uh, it's a series of of projects associated with Blake Avenue. We have a couple of other phases in the upcoming years on that. Uh, another project that we've teamed up with on Rafta, Rafta is coming in and removing all the rest of the rail through Glenwood Springs from Seventh Street up to Twenty-third Street. Not only does it include removing all that rail and the ties, it's going to remove the current rail crossings at Twenty-third, at Riverside and also at Seventh. So those will make those non-existent and and finally a smooth path, um, for our bikers and users. That one is, uh, RFP is due in 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 early June with construction hopefully to follow soon after. Um, I didn't mention the Blake Avenue. Turn back that real quick. Uh, RFPs are due May sixth with the construction of of the Blake Avenue, um, Phase Two will be this rest of this calendar year. So essentially from sometime towards the end of May through essentially Halloween. Another project, we're about ready to start that was awarded, awarded tonight and consent agenda is our Red Mountain North Improvements Project. That's new, new, uh, curb and gutter, new roadway and a little bit of new water line up on the Red Mountain North. We've done several other phases up there. So it's a continuation and completion of of that. One last thing in construction, um, is the street department is completing a, a new building out in the south yard. Foundations are poured. The building is going to be erected pretty soon. That project should be done in May. Um, and then last thing in construction, I I misspoke a second ago, to to wrap up our basin debris flow work that that was because of the debris flows in twenty twenty-three, Basin A, which is above our, um, up to our water plant. We are finalizing, um, that project, the last bit to complete and repave the road. That should be done the first week in in June when we finally get paved. So that's all we're doing for construction this year. You can imagine that's it. So some design stuff to go quickly through it. So we have RFPs in, uh, on a potential new roundabout at Wilson Road and and Midland Avenue. Um, that's something that's probably desperately needed as B L D comes online and then Rafta is looking at a new transit center. Highway six and twenty twenty-four shared use path has been something that's been around for a while. It is projected to wrap up design this year and go into construction later this year. One thing that's allowed us really to finish that design, again, on consent agenda earlier, was the devolution process. So very soon Glenwood will own six and twenty-four from Donigan all the way to exit one sixteen. Allows us to have control of that road, uh, and this is sort of, uh, an output of that. And this will allow us to go and chase some grants that we're gonna look at for, to funding that project. We have several, three, three projects that are in some stage of design survey. So North Glenwood Springs, the Cowden, um, Overland Neighborhood, including Eighth and Midland, um, through Seventh Street through Eighth Street. So and then also, um, the Glenwood Park subdivision, those three neighborhoods, um, need kind of a holistic redesign and 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 upgrade. So we're gonna be looking at those and those are in, in, like I said, starting in design and surveying right now. The city's gonna take on about a ten percent design and kind of get that going. Those will be relatively large projects from a dollar perspective. So we're looking at phasing those, but again, those will be in the near future. Construction work probably starting maybe in twenty-six or later. Coach Miller Drive behind the high schools in 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 design right now with approximately fifty percent complete. That project, um, entails brand new sidewalks. There's no sidewalks there to connect the Rio Grande Trail. It's a lot of safety improvements for trail users and people going to high school. A new water line is in that road and then a full new rebuild of that road. That road is in pretty tough condition. In addition to stormwater curb and gutter. And then finally, we're looking and and working on the design of Nineteenth Street. So that's the street that leads up to the hospital. Looking to, um, repair that road, which is kind of bumpy. We've heard from the E M Ts that that stretch is not the best stretch when you are on a gurney. So we're looking to make that a little bit better ride. Add some storm drain and curb and gutter and and drainage features. All right, so that is our list. Um, I want to real quickly just show on, this is the Blake Avenue Phase Two. This will be impactful to, 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 to say the least. Anytime construction goes on, it is impactful, but this will be a full road rebuild. So we're giving some guidance to the contractor on potential road shutdowns. To start off with, every resident, every business will always get access during construction and certainly afterwards. So we have that in mind. But we're also looking to, um, make this the most efficient way possible for a contractor. So ideas, we have four phases and who knows if that's how the contractor will do it. We're providing them guidance on if they want to do this of closing down chunks of the road in order to get in there and and blow it up at once. Again, will be impactful. One of the big ones is the nursing home. They receive E M T service every day. And so we've been working with them and the fire department to make sure that all the time an ambulance can get in there no matter what. We've done quite a bit of extensive outreach. We've hung door hangers on every single house and business and contacted them. We are hosting a Zoom meeting this upcoming Monday from five thirty to six thirty for folks who want to learn more about the project and the impacts to their neighborhood and how to navigate this situation. So again, construction's not fun. Um, this road is not a great road. It's in terrible condition. So really, um, desperately need some, some love.
Can I butt in for one second? Please, sorry, my language, public works director. We did apply for a Dola grant for this for seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, which we were awarded. Usually we have to wait till like mid-May. We actually got that paperwork today. So when this is act, when the bids come in, we will not have to wait to do a contract. We'll be able to put it in front of you guys and start on the project immediately. But
Excellent.
There's seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars coming from Dola for this project.
Good. Thank you for the info.
That, yeah, that, that, that's great news. As Matt said, normally have to wait a while, but someone's efficient. Thank, thank goodness for that. So this, this is a couple of the traffic control slides just for, for Wilson. Um, again, gonna be sort of impactful for this stretch. This will be a shorter duration project, just a couple of months. We are gonna shut down entirely the road, um, from, uh, the intersection of East Meadows and and Midland unto the rec center to fully rebuild it. And then we're gonna flip-flop the closures to to the other side, um, just to make sure that we can get in there and being as efficient as possible and reduce the impacts. We've been working with both the rec center to make sure they understand the impacts and how to get people in and out. Um, along with Rafta, who operate our Ride Glenwood bus system that stopped through here. So they have been rerouted. Plus, we have reached out to all the businesses and the apartments. So, um, trying to do our best to make sure people are aware of what's going on. But, um, again, construction is not fun, but is a, is a necessary evil when you need to repair things. So those are a couple of the construction projects. Real quick, I'm gonna run through these very quickly. These are non-construction projects, but other things engineering and public works are doing. We're doing a whole new road in street condit, condition assessment study. So again, if you're familiar, it's a, it's a study called Pazer, which you don't really need to know, but it ranks roads from from good to bad and really to help us prioritize where we spend our money, um, most efficiently. Uh, again, our philosophy is you, you, you may have picked up on is when we dig once, we dig and replace everything that's possibly needed. So, um, that's really our goal. Upcoming, we have a stormwater master plan that we're gonna be issuing out again to really get in front of any future for permitting issues. We're completing a stormwater infrastructure mapping exercise, which we're bringing into our G S system. A lot of our existing stormwater infrastructure, um, Public Works and Water is doing, um, a water tank safety O and M and upgrade projects. So going to all of our tanks to making sure they are, are code compliant and have the correct safety, um, um, devices on them. Our, our water, uh, group and our, and our wastewater group are continually doing sewer lining projects where it makes sense as opposed to replacing it. You'd, you'd line them. Some water lines that we're gonna be doing in-house, gonna do that replacement. Um, I mentioned earlier, I, I, a project on there, but we have a lot of miscellaneous street repairs that we're gonna be doing this year. So all over town, replacing cracked sidewalks, broken curb and gutters, um, some minor drainage issues. So we're gonna try to tackle a bunch of those this year. Um, and then every year we do have a handful of chip seal projects on roads to extend the life of our roads. Um, and where we need to, we will do mill and overlays on some of the roads that need a, a more detailed, um, detailed attention to them. A few things on the transportation side. We have a robust bus shelter replacement program going on. We're trying to replace as many bus shelters in town as we can. We have a grant for that. I'll give you a micro transit update in a second, but that's one of them. We have been teamed with Clear to do a T D M or Transportation Demand Management Program to try to reduce traffic through the city and and through our community. We are wrapping up a comprehensive safety action plan in May of this year. They will come back and present that as a final draft to you guys. Again, that is how do we reduce our traffic collisions and and deaths in town? We are continuing to do bike share planning and programming, um, with WeCycle. So that's a system of of bikes that you can check out for, um, less than a half an hour and ride around town. It's been successful up valley. So we're considering bringing that to Glenwood. Lastly, is rapid flash beacon. So those are those things that you, you, as a pedestrian, you'd push the button and it flashes. So we are adding, um, a bunch of them through town at critical areas. And so, um, that is what we are doing. And that was a lot of stuff.
That was a lot of stuff, very.
Real quick, before I, I, I am done talking about this, here is a real quick before picture of Wilson Road. And here's what it looks now. So same perspective, again, no sidewalk where it was before, and now we added one that that is heavily used. People walked on the dirt. So a, a good example of our, our tax dollars, um, being efficiently used, in my opinion. So with that, I will turn it over for any questions on projects and programs that we're doing.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Ryan. Great information. Always good to hear what we're doing. Any questions? Let's see, councillor Townsley, please.
One quick question for you. When you, you talk about, and I really appreciate pulling a road up, redoing everything that you can when you do it. What's the lifespan of that? What's your expected lifespan of before you need to get back and do something?
It varies. I would, I would say what are our fifty years? Depending on the road, you know, it, it, it varies, you know, twenty to thirty to forty years, depending on how we, how we up, upkeep it. You know, one of the things of giving it some more longevity is when it starts to get somewhat older, chip seal on it. It's kind of the same thing as putting an extra layer of paint on your, on your house. But again, we're trying to invest for the long term. One of the things we're really doing for that is making sure that the subgrade is there. You know, we know a lot of our streets in Glenwood, um, have pavement on bare native dirt. So most of Wolfson, for example, um, is on, there's no subgrade. So again, we are building the roads, um, to today's standard, which we should get a lot more life in it. If you want to add anything to that.
It just depends on what the loading is, if there's buses, no buses, light loads, like Lincolnwood, after we rebuild it, probably shouldn't have to go back other than crack seal. Maybe a chip seal overlay for the next fifty years, basically. Wolfson, it, there's a lot of traffic on that road. So that one, we're prepared. The, the way the GeoTex would do it is to design an easel load for twenty years of life. But that's not twenty years of life. It's twenty years until they basically expect you to do something heavy with it, like a mill and overlay or something to that effect. But we'll crack seal it, chip seal it and expand that life as much as humanly possible. You know, those roads in Glenwood Park that are falling apart, they're two inches, they're on soil. They're still drivable after like fifty years. So as long as you keep things up, especially when they're designed and constructed properly the first time, you should get, uh, really long life out of those. Thanks, yeah.
And and I will just add to what Matt said, just to highlight is we have a very robust crack sealing program. Again, water is the enemy of roads. And so, you know, Matt's team has really been pro- Again, water is the enemy of roads. And so, you know, Matt's team has really been proactive in making sure that we're out there sealing all the cracks to make sure the water stays in the curb and gutter and doesn't get into the roads. So again, we were trying to take a very holistic approach when we look at our road system.
Thank you. Councillor Smith.
Thank you. Thank you, Ryan. Uh, two quick questions where my pencil just was not keeping up with your pace of information. Uh, I think you, I caught you saying that an RFP is going out sometime soon for the Midland Wolfson Roundabout.
So, so yeah, I, I apologize to clarification. We have received RFPs already and we are evaluating and will be awarding the design contract for that very soon.
And construction when?
Well, good question. Construction perhaps as soon as next year. Um, we don't really know the true cost of this roundabout. So that's one thing that we're trying to play is how does that fit into say our five, 10-year plan as we're budgeting, um, the, the monies that we have. One of the things is once we understand better the true cost of the project, um, is that something we can forward in-house? Is that something we should go out for grants? Is that something should we team up with other partners? Um, should we work with Rafta to bring in since they have a, a new, um, you know, transit center? So those will be decisions that we'll be making. Um, tentatively, we have it, it programmed for construction next year, but that's, that's tentative until we get a little bit better information. Um, we're likely going to get that 50% design, which again comes with a better cost estimate, um, sometime in, in, in the summer. So we'll be able to, to understand and, and answer that question the next time we give this update.
Perfect. Thank you. Another one on timing, um, beginning the holistic design look at Cowden, Seventh, Eighth plus Glenwood Park. Can I tell the neighbors any guess on when the first phase of Glenwood Park construction will be?
Uh, I, I would say no. And, and here, here's the method to our madness. We're going to first go out there, get a robust survey of everything. Um, we have some fantastic engineers in-house. So Ashley Dostal, the Assistant City Engineer is, is extremely adept at design. So what we're going to do is take a first stab in-house of getting a 10% design, what we kind of want to see. And then really start a very, very robust public outreach. Again, both three, those big three projects. So North Glenwood, um, the Cowden neighborhood or Eighth and Cowden and Glenwood Park, we're going to do a very, very robust public outreach and really get an idea from the residents, what they want. Do the Glenwood Park residents want curb and gutter and sidewalks? Do they want the roadside ditches? What, what, what do we kind of want? And we kind of want to take that back in. So if I had to guess, it may be something, um, again, all those projects total up a lot of money, um, way more than we currently, you know, currently have. So we're going to have to make some decisions on priorities. So ma- maybe, you know, maybe next year, maybe towards the end of next year, but more likely probably 27, um, is, is probably where we staked on, on St. Glenwood Park.
I have a couple who have already declared that they want to speed bump in front of their house. Uh, and then final, final question on the, the, the very quickly upcoming, um, Blake Phase Two, which includes Blake itself.
Yeah.
For a ways north of 23rd, that very first chunk north of 23rd is a very narrow street. Where the bicycle lane has always been severely stub standard, barely three feet wide. Uh, the overall master plan design for Blake, that, that you, that you published and, uh, within the last year or so, uh, shows more adequate spacing for car parking, bicycle lane, or street or driving lane. How do you fit all that in that's, that particular block?
That, that, that's a good point. So, so we are challenged to do that. So again, what we've done is we're continuing that theme of that eight-foot wide shared use path onto 23rd Street and then up around the corner.
Really?
So the idea is that we're going to continue that. And so that would be a, you know, the, the bicyclists again can always ride on the road. Um, but instead of in a, in a bike lane that shares it with vehicles, it'd be wide enough for bikes and heads to be using it together. And then our idea is as it wraps around through the hospital area, which would be, it's the most complicated area in the last phase. It would continue it through there and kind of have a medical campus type situation, right? That again, we're slow traffic. Um, but, but again, allowing bicyclists to be outside of the conflict zones with vehicles coming in and parking and whatnot. So that's the concept that we're applying on, on Blake Phase Two.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Sure. Thank you. Any other questions? No, we'll see none. Um, so we, let's get into the micro transit, I think, and then we'll do maybe public comment if anybody's interested. So.
Right. Right. Micro transit. Yeah. So this is a program that we are rolling out here starting, um, in May. Really exciting program. Um, it is basically a dial-up service where you, it's an app-based service. Um, think of like Uber van at your place of, of origin, you'd use your phone or you could dial up on a telephone and actually call a van to you. It would come to pick you up and then it would take you to your destination. This is something that is, um, was rolled out in Carbondale last year, highly successful. Um, we're rolling it out in Glenwood, like I said, in May. Um, we have, starting off, four vehicles, two ADA, um, access with wheelchair accessibility, one transit van and then one minivan. Um, so it's going to serve all of Glenwood Springs. It's going to cost $1 to ride. It's going to operate Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Saturday and Sunday, 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Um, again, serves, service everywhere, right? We have a lot of areas, South Glenwood in particular, that have no transit service at all. Um, so we're really hoping this fills in the gap. Um, at least initially, Ride Glenwood would also be operating in its current form. Um, this project is being funded with a grant, a 50% matching grant from Rafta, um, for a couple of years to really start to get going. Um, gather data and then we'll figure out how our transit system operates in the future. But again, a really cool feature, um, that is app-based and, and really AI and machine learning based. So when you get picked up, you may not be dropped off at your destination first. It may either drop off and pick up people on your way. Um, but a very cool system that we're looking at implementing. Um, not a lot of restrictions. We don't want this to turn into the school bus for the high school. So we're not going to have the bus, the micro transit system stop at the school itself. Um, we are looking, uh, for, for ridership to, to be people generally 12 to 14 years and older. Um, we're not, we're not excluding certain populations, but again, there should be some floor where, where, where people, you know, people ride. But we don't want this to just simply be for certain populations. So if you need to get soccer practice or, or whatnot, right? We want to make this available to, to as many of our, our, our citizens as possible. So very cool system. Um, look for it. And, and like I said, in May, we're doing a pretty, uh, heavy rollout here from an advertisement perspective. Um, again, open to everybody in Glenwood, whether you're a, a tourist, a citizen or a visitor, you, you can jump on this and, and not, not drive your car.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, questions from councillor? We'll start with councillor Zalinski. Did I do it?
Yes. All right. So I just got an email that popped up. Um, it sounds like there's a question in Glenwood Park about the path from Brush Creek to Ashes and Trail. And I'm guessing it's hard, there's it, the question's cut off, but I'm guessing there's gravel at the bottom and there's gravel at the top, but the middle part is kind of roughed out. Is there plans to finish that and complete that?
Yeah, yeah. So that was part of our, our three-mile confluence project we wrapped up last year. Um, I shouldn't say wrapped up because we have a little bit left to do. We have some signage and, and, and some picnic tables that need to go in. And then the, the, the trail needs to be cleaned up. So we're going to be working with the contractor to put something else in there. Right? That crushed gravel that's at the top of the bottom is not conducive to riding your bike. Or if you put something else in there. And the other thing that we want to be aware of is we're trying to get something in there that has some more rocks in it. Um, to try to control the dust. We don't want it to be a dust bowl. So we are working with the contractor right now to kind of complete those. Um, and then for council's knowledge, we're looking to do a ribbon cutting ceremony, um, to celebrate that project, um, I think in May. I'm not sure exactly the timeframe, but keep an eye out for that.
Cool. And I have one other, is it appropriate to make a comment?
Since, since it's not really an action, sure, why not?
So I just wanted to make a comment on the micro transit because we're the only community that's rolled this out that's charging. Um, and I had the pleasure of sitting on the first last mile committee that kind of looked at these transit options and how to make them sustainable. And the overriding theme with every community that's already done this is that they, it's wildly popular and they don't know how to keep it going. And so it needs to be sustainable. So by going last, we have the benefit of being able to learn from our predecessors. And the big thing is, is we want this to be a big part of a really good local transit option. And so by charging, we're going to get a little bit better data and we're also going to start to like set ourselves up to have a long-term sustainable project. So if anybody in the community wonders why we're charging, I really wanted to make sure that that was communicated, that it's purposeful and it's for the community benefit.
Good point. Thank you. Uh, councillor Smith.
Thank you, Ryan. This is exciting because it's, it's almost now.
It is. Yeah.
The, the micro transit. Uh, could you clarify just a little bit more on the age ranges that you mentioned? You said we're targeting a certain age range, but it's open to everybody?
Correct. Yeah. So, um, you know, let, let's say if you're riding it by yourself, we're looking for, you know, probably kids someplace, you know, in the order of like 12 to 14. Is, is an appropriate floor where we want to go. There's no, no specific range, but that's the recommendation. Um, we would also rely upon parents, what their comfort level is to put their child who rides alone on this bus. Our drivers are background checked, um, alcohol and drug screened. So we have no, no worries about the drivers themselves. But again, if someone rides, it is a young child, um, you know, we, we defer to the discretion of, of a parent. Um, but again, our recommendation is 12 to 14 is probably that age when, when you could be riding it by yourself.
Thank you. Uh, and I asked that question in behalf of parents who I talked to over the last two months, door to door. Uh, the, the frequency of when are we going to have a bus in the Southwest neighborhoods was pretty significant. Uh, my answer was micro transit is coming in order to, among other things, measure that viability, find out where people want to go. Um, I assume that data collection, that, that that information that might inform future fixed route transit service is still part of this work.
Yeah, absolutely. It's, it's very paramount. So every ride will be logged. Where you start and where you get dropped off. So we can actually collect that data. Um, and again, to inform, should we expand Ride Glenwood with the fixed route system? Should, if South Bridge is built, go around South Bridge and loop around, right? So we want to be informed on both demand and traffic patterns of, of users.
Thank you. And, and again, the other thing I'm hearing from parents is boy, do we have other things to do besides being a chauffeur in the summertime for our middle schoolers included. Uh, so that's, that's why I was, wanted to double check that age. I, I, I think that at least middle schoolers have shown that they can ride, Ride Glenwood on their own with their parents' guidance.
Yeah.
Uh, this should, should mirror that. I, I suggest, and it sounds like that's where you're headed.
Yep.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Councillor Moore.
Ryan, I would, I would strongly encourage keeping track of what the system really costs. While, while charging a dollar compared to other systems may be, may be outrageous. If you find out that it costs $12, we better know that. So I encourage you to have a method of keeping track of the real cost of the system so that we don't make some sort of a decision about keeping this going because it's such a great thing and then finding out, uh-oh, how do we keep it going? And we can't afford to keep it going. And we end up with a lot of angry customers.
Yep. Absolutely. And, and we will be, and, and we do the same thing for the Ride Glenwood system. Um, both are, you know, the, the Ride Glenwood is free. So obviously there's no recoup and, and revenue on Ride Glenwood. But absolutely, we do keep track of that. And, and as councillor Zalinski said, um, at some point, the funding does dry up from Rafta. And so this has to be sustainable. And so we're looking at a lot of different ideas as this rolls out. You know, for example, are, do seniors ride free? Or one thing that we've talked with Rafta is if a ride originates from a destination or from origination and drops off at a bus stop or a transit stop, then Rafta is going to pick up the dollars, pick up the fee for that, that ride. So we are absolutely looking at that. We're looking at other ways of generating monies, whether it's advertisements or other things. But um, the other, the other thing too, is we look at the overall transportation system. Ride Glenwood and new now micro transit, both are extremely expensive programs. Does one go up and one comes down? Does Ride Glenwood, um, disappear altogether? Does it turn into a much smaller fixed route system? So those are things that we are absolutely going to, um, need to analyze and figure out. Because you're exactly correct. At the end of the day, um, um, we have to have something that's sustainable long-term.
Thank you. Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Any, anything else? We'll see none. Then anybody from the public like to, uh, comment on the, what was it? The construction updates and the micro transit? Anybody online? We'll see nobody. Excellent. We'll move on. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That was a lot, but it was great.
Yep, absolutely.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, moving into, everybody good? Do we need a break? Okay, you'll be right back. Uh, item, uh, 16, tax incentive request for lodging at the Meadows. Hannah Klausman, please.
It is not often that city engineer Ryan talks more than me in a meeting, so this is a nice switch.
Oh, and by the way, we're going to start, stop using the word robust. Jonathan's gone. We're going to find a new word from here on out. We're going to come up with a new word, okay? So that's right.
Okay. Hannah Klausman, Community Development Director. Tonight, um, I'm presenting to you a tax incentive request, uh, that our department has received. Um, we've had some of these recently, so you're most likely familiar with this process, but for the newly elected councillors, welcome first of all. And also please feel free to ask me any questions on background information on this program. Um, so the request before you this evening is for economic assistance to support a new hotel on an undeveloped lot in Glenwood Meadows. Uh, this project has received entitlement approval, but they have not moved towards a building permit process yet. Uh, so council saw this project a couple of months back for approval. Staff included some, um, high-level analysis in your staff report comparing our existing hotel and lodging services that are here, um, and also other parts of the request. Um, and I would call attention to the section that we included on tier one tax rebate availability, if there's any confusion there. Uh, for tonight, if council does review this request and approve, uh, in full or partial, um, then the applicant would not be eligible to apply for the tier one sales tax rebate that is in our code currently. And conversely, if they are not approved this evening, as I pointed out in the staff report, they do have the availability to apply to that other program, which council changed recently and is in effect. Um, I've got the details of that in the staff report, but I'm happy to go over it further. Uh, the basics of the request, this is an amount of $565,000 and seven years with a 50% rebate happening over that time. Uh, staff does not include recommendations for these things. We defer to council to review these aspects and the Economic Development Department deals more in that tier one sales tax rebate that I mentioned that is in our code. The applicant is here tonight with a brief presentation and able to answer all of your questions as well. Uh, with that, I will open it up, um, for any questions you have of myself. I also have Economic Development Specialist Jacob Zuck in the back, should you need any more statistics.
Sounds great. Thank you very much.
You.
Uh, back to council. Any, uh, any questions to Hannah at this point? Councillor Schacter, please.
Hannah, could you, um, clarify in our tier one, item two, fire and emergency services impact fees? How those are determined, what they consist of? And maybe you can comment, it seemed to be fire and impact was mentioned in the applicant's package and they're significantly different numbers. I just want to clarify what we're referring to, please.
So, um, for tier one, I've listed the five items that an applicant can apply to, um, which does not come before council. This is staff, staff program that is on the, um, code. Um, so there's the water and sewer system improvement fees, which gets, um, my brain just forgot the word, um, calculated, thank you. Um, when a new business comes in, if it's a higher use than what it was before, then we're going to calculate that difference. Um, fire and emergency services is also based on a variety of factors. It's a whole other spreadsheet on its own. Um, for residential, it's square footage. Um, for commercial, it's more straightforward. Um, change of use can trigger that as well. And I'm not quite sure, um, councillor Schacter, on what the, the difference between the amounts.
When the applicant, when the applicant comes, we'll deal with that. Thank you.
Included an estimated amount based on a perceived building permit in the future, which hasn't happened yet. So it's still estimated based on the square footage of the hotel. Hotels are an interesting category because they're commercial and residential. Obviously you've got people sleeping there. Um, so fire emergency services has a very specific category for, uh, hotel use to be charged.
Thank you. Any other questions? We'll see none. I got a quick question. If you don't mind, this, this has been in front of us when, when it was approved. Was, isn't that, that's the same thing, right?
Um, the hotel was very recent. So, uh, I believe in February was the approval.
This year?
Very recent.
Oh, really? Was that? Okay. I thought I just heard it. Okay. Um, okay. That's all I needed to know.
Okay.
Just how, how far back is it? Yeah. Excellent. Thank you. Uh, I see no more question. Would the applicant care to? Uh, I see no more question. Would the applicant care to come forward? And present your item, please. State your name and address for the record, or, yeah.
Uh, my name is Brandon Rath, and I'm a resident of Denver, Colorado.
Thank you. Welcome.
Yeah, listen around. Perfect. Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you to the council for taking time to listen to us tonight. Congratulations on all the movement that happened. It's, uh, been a lot going on tonight. Uh, I feel like every time I come in here, there's more people than chairs. Uh, last time it was the hockey team that came in, and so it's always a entertaining experience. Um, like I said, my name is Brandon Rath. I represent Cotford Capital. Cotford is a real estate investment and development firm based in Denver, Colorado. We have been in existence for quite some time, going back thirty years in a number of different entities. Um, I think the, the biggest thing I want to point out, and, or I guess there's a bunch of things I'd like to point out, but I know this has been in front of the council a number of times over the past couple of sessions. I think this is slightly different than what's happened before, because this is a new development as opposed to the other projects that already existed or were replacements of sort of empty space or shell space. Um, where we currently are looking to develop this property, uh, we already own two hotels right in the market, and I know that a couple of council members had expressed some concern over competition, uh, at least with the Barnes and Noble project. The biggest competition here is us. We know this market. Uh, in fact, our first two projects that we started in Glenwood were back in the nineteen nineties. Those two hotels still exist today, the Hampton Inn and the Holiday Inn were the two projects then. Um, since that time, we've believed in Glenwood Springs so much that we've added two more hotels. We added the Residence Inn and the Marriott, which would be the two properties immediately adjacent to the property that we're proposing this development for. Um, when we first started looking at doing this development, the world was slightly different than where we're at today from, certainly from an economic standpoint, a tariff standpoint. We don't really know where we are. We've heard it from other people up here today that tariffs are going to have various different implications on construction, development materials, let alone labor, how that works out as well. So I think that that's something that we're certainly trying to judge and, and, you know, understand and try and get this project to the finish line. Um, in regards to where we think, you know, our relationship with Glenwood is and where it's been, uh, the total taxes paid from Cotford Properties to the city of Glenwood exceeds thirty-two million dollars since our first property came here. And while that's not the biggest number in the world, it's certainly a mighty big number. And we foresee, well, I, I guess as we see it now, we're currently paying average annual city sales tax of five hundred thousand dollars. We're paying over six hundred thousand dollars in lodging taxes, let alone other taxes that we're paying as well. And so where does that money go? It goes to affordable housing. It goes to city parks, it goes to infrastructure, it goes to a whole variety of different areas. Um, this is all important to us because this is an area that we believe in, or we wouldn't be here today. Uh, we aren't doing a whole lot of other projects right now, and development across the U.S. is slowing down significantly. We also have some major concerns around hospitality, just in general, but we believe in Glenwood. Um, I know that the total Cotford city sales taxes paid to date exceeds eight, eight and a half million dollars. The total Cotford lodging taxes paid today exceeds ten million dollars. And again, goes to a whole slew of different areas to help support the city. Uh, the next slide that we've got shows Glenwood's, Glenwood Springs' general sales taxes on an annualized basis and what it, what it's been in total going back to two thousand and sixteen. We think that's an appropriate number to look at, given sort of the ups and downs that have occurred throughout that market cycle. And throughout that time period, we're consistently paying seven percent of the total sales tax for the city of Glenwood Springs, which is, uh, uh, you know, a decent number. But when you look at the lodging tax, we're paying more than fifty percent of the lodging tax to the city that the city receives on an annualized basis, which from our standpoint is incredibly significant. This isn't a problem to us. It's a partnership that we see. We want to be here. We want to continue the partnership. We want to continue to grow with the city. Um, the other things that I think are important to note is the project that we're looking to put in place is, I'd almost identically replacing the hundred and fifty units that were taken offline and rolled into affordable housing, which means that's tax dollars out of the city's pocket. We're trying to replace that, right? So the whole idea and the ask from us is, we're paying you taxes. We'd like some of those taxes rebated to us over a certain time period, and then the hotel will exist in perpetuity almost. Uh, uh, you know, for an extended period of time. The last couple of hotels we've, you know, started building, go back to the nineteen nineties, they're still up and operating. We've added two more hotels. They're up and operating. We very much foresee this being the same thing where it continues in, you know, an extended period of time. Uh, we think the, the current economic environment, like I touched on a little bit earlier, is causing us to have a little bit of a pause, and we're trying to underwrite this property so that it's profitable for us. We're willing to put in our own capital, and we're just looking to continue to build that partnership. Um, the last thing, or I guess the last couple of things I would say is, this new project is an extended stay project. There's no other prod, there's no other hotel in the market that's an extended stay, except for our Residence Inn. And we firsthand see the need for additional room and spaces for an extended stay project. And it's not just guests and visitors and tourism that use these properties. It's government workers, it's contract workers that are here building a lot of the infrastructure and projects that are going on or in nearby regions and areas as well. And this is in a, this is a very high demand type of a project for this market in particular. And I, I guess the, the final thing I would say is, we're really trying to figure out ways to make this project work. Our partner, uh, our franchise partner gives us a timeline to sort of make things happen. If it doesn't happen, it goes away. And if it doesn't, if this project goes away, I don't know when the next time we'll sort of have that opportunity, given what's going on with everything economically, internationally. We certainly want to build this project, and that's why we're here, sort of pleading with the city council to, you know? I know this isn't something that you guys want to hear, right? At this moment, I know that there's been talk about creating a policy of how to approach this stuff. But we're getting pushed up against a timeline that's really making this a bit of a critical decision for us on whether this is a go or no-go type of a project. So that's the presentation that I had for you. Happy to answer any questions that you've got.
All right, thank you. Back to council, questions to the applicant? Or, or, uh, community development, no problem. Counselor Zelinsky, please.
Hannah, actually, could you approach the podium again? So I appreciate the presentation that you gave, but I needed some help understanding it. With the tier one rebates that are available, how is that less than what is being asked for? Where does that divert?
Same mind. I was actually doing the math as I was sitting over there.
Because I was going to try and do the math, and I'm like, I'm not.
And my apologies that I didn't give you that math in the staff report. So, and, uh, and we have discussed this as well with the applicant, the differences between, um, the tier one and what they're asking for tonight. So with the tier one, um, it's set in our code that it's up to a twenty percent rebate on the tax generation that they can request each year for five years. And then the amount that they can do is based on those fees that we talked about. So it's kind of a couple of different levels. So based on their numbers, what we can see if they went in the tier one route, which is not what you're thinking about tonight.
Right.
Um, assuming five hundred thousand dollars of sales tax generation in the year, they could apply for up to twenty percent of that, so a hundred thousand over five years, and they would get to five hundred thousand. So there's a difference in time, uh, like how long the program will last. Um, tier one is likely to be lower than what they could, um, asking for a fifty percent sales tax and lodging tax rebate, um, which is before you tonight. So tier one is meant to be kind of, um, it's usually less money, and it's over a longer time. From the, the, uh, math that we provided in the staff report, we estimate if you were to approve the request tonight, they would probably get to that five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar request in year two, probably year three. That obviously depends on a lot of factors, uh, Brandon was just mentioning, um, from the economy. But they would likely get there faster, and we've seen that with some of the other economic incentives that the city has given. Um, you know, they set seven or five years, and they achieve it in year two. With the tier one, because the rebate is set lower at twenty percent of what they generate, it does take them longer, and they might not generate the full amount of the fees that they paid.
Got it. And the request tonight is for, it's totals about five hundred and sixty-five.
Five hundred and sixty-five.
So, because that, okay, I was making sure, because in my mind, that was the math, and I was like, that didn't feel like a significant, so thank you.
Seven-year timeline.
Right.
But if five hundred and sixty-five thousand is reached before seven years, then the program.
Then they're set. Okay, thank you. That clarifies it. I appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Schacter, you had one earlier.
Thank you. Hannah, just a point of clarification, is it twenty or twenty-five at tier one that we approved?
Uh, the change was to twenty-five percent, so that was an increase. It used to be twenty, and now it's twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Thank you. I just realized I was the one that mentioned twenty.
That's not.
I'm not used to it yet.
And, uh, a question, please, Brandon, at this point, if you can disclose, how many beds are in your existing hotels right now?
Uh, between the two of them, I think it's about a hundred and twenty-five.
Total on all four?
No, no, we only own two hotels at this point in time, the Residence Inn and the, uh, Marriott.
I see. I didn't understand that. Thank you. And your occupancy rate, are you able to disclose that?
Uh, we're high seventies, low eighties. I mean, it's, there's seasonality involved, so.
Right, got it. All right. No other questions at this point?
All right, thank you. Counselor Smith.
Thank you. I think my questions are for you, sir, and thank you for that very, very clear presentation already. Can you tell, tell us more about who stays in an extended stay residence?
Yeah, well, it, it depends market to market, obviously. But what's really unique about our Residence Inn here is typically the, it's families that are staying there, and they're on trips, and they're staying for extended week trips. It's the average length of stay as opposed to a typical hotel, which is, let's call it two to three nights. An extended stay at a hotel is three to seven nights on average. But it's families, because you've got an extra suite, you've got a kitchenette, you've got a way for families to, you know, basically feel like they're on, at home away from home. What's really unique about the Glenwood Springs Residence Inn, though, is a large portion, let's call it twenty to thirty percent of the, the people that are staying there, or guests, are, are not on a, on, they're not in the market for tourism purposes. They're there for work. So they're government contractors, they're contractors here for projects, they're building things, they're working up in the hills. They're, I mean, it's forestry, it's all, everything you can imagine of other people that are coming here that aren't just here for tourism. So that's why we think there's a, a definitely a demand for additional rooms in the market.
The, and, and that's my second question. Uh, the staff report, you explained that you have some extended stay portions of your other places. And then staff report listed several other ho- hotels or inns or lodges that have this feature. Help me understand, I think you said this is the first extended stay hotel.
No, the, the Residence Inn that we currently own is, is all suites. So it's an extended stay product. The Home Two Suites is the, would be the second. So the first one was the Residence Inn.
That was the first one.
Right, the other hotels that have these kitchenettes and dinettes, they'll have, I mean, I don't own them, but they'll have a, a portion of the rooms available. Will have kitchenettes and maybe an, uh, an extra suite, uh, in, in the hotel as an offering. But the vast majority of the rooms are your typical standard hotel rooms.
Okay, so that first and second, I just wasn't keeping up. Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, I think my last question is, I, I don't know if this is, um, impolite, but we'll find out. But we learned that, that this, that this staff-based tier one allowance at a different rate and probably a different number of years is available. Um, why not just use that?
Uh, well, if you're buying a home and the home costs you a million dollars, and there's an opportunity for you to buy a home that maybe is a little outside your price range and it's a million dollars, but you need a seventy percent loan in order to actually buy the property, or you can get a forty percent loan, now you can't afford the property, so you're just not going to buy the home. So that's basically the point that we're getting pushed up to with the increased costs with everything else that's going on. I mean, we got a unanimous approval for this property, I think it was a, a year ago, in twenty twenty-four. Um, and since then, the world's not the same world. Costs are increasing. Other construction projects we're seeing are going above budget for sure. And now you've got questions about tariffs and materials and everything else that goes into that. So we're here sort of, if, if we don't get this money, we may not do the project. I guess is kind of the final point I've got.
So the accelerated assistance that you're requesting helps your financing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Weimer.
Excuse me. Mr. Rath, thanks for schlepping all the way up here tonight. Um, appreciate it. We always appreciate when you guys come, are here in person, so thanks. It's important. I understand, I understand the impact, the fire fees, the water and sewer fees. Can you talk a bit more about the facade enhancements and then the public amenity feature?
Sure, so the, well, I can talk to the public amenity feature, the facade goes back to our, our construction team.
Yeah.
The, the public amenity features are, are requirements by the city to, and keep the property uh, suitable to the public.
Right.
Right? And so it's something that we're putting on to the property that we don't have necessarily at other properties. So that's where that's coming from, from our.
Do you know what that is yet?
Uh, no, because we're still in design phase, so.
It's like fifty grand is sort of your budget, or, or that's what we've asked you to spend?
No, that, that's our estimate on what we're going to spend on that, that enhancement.
Did we ask you to spend a certain amount for public amenity?
Uh, I'd have to talk to our construction team. I don't think it was a, a number that was given. I think it's a certain amount of space with certain criteria sort of wrapped around it.
Okay. And then the facade enhancements, why is that not just part of construction costs? Why is that called out specifically like this?
Uh, because it goes, and it's tied into different requirements of this, as I understand it, from what I've been told from construction, it goes to different requirements that we're being asked to put on top of the property that we probably wouldn't do on a typical Home Two Suites.
Hannah, are you able to speak to either of those line items? I put in a laptop and a good gravy.
Um, yes, I was going back to confirm the date, might have been a little earlier than what I mentioned.
Yeah.
There was, um, a public amenity discussion. I was going to go back in the files to see. I don't think we arrived at an actual amount because it is still in design.
Yep.
But they're required to provide it as part of the Glenwood Meadows.
So this is a statue or a water feature or something like that?
Yeah, this was more, I think there was some trail connections and an, an area for hanging out and soaking up the vibes of Meadow, yes.
Yeah.
Sweet vibes of.
But it is a requirement of that, um, of that Meadows development, that they have to provide it. So a little bit unlike other developments where they're required to do open space and have a little bit more flexibility with how they choose to do that. Meadows is a little bit more stipulated.
So, so it's really the fact that they're developing within the Meadows, that they are now required. So that, and then are we, is the Meadows or is anyone requiring this to spend a certain amount of money on this amenity?
Uh, no, it's more, um, a calculation of space. So like how big the project they are proposing and how much they need to provide in that amenity space.
So square footage wise, as a percentage of the total site?
Mm-hmm.
In a sense.
Yeah, we don't dictate an actual amount to be spent.
Okay, and then?
But it will cost money to construct.
Um, and then the facade enhancements, what, what is that? And why is that, why is that called out as like its own line item here?
That is called out because traditionally, these funds, uh, in, uh, assistance requests have included, um, if you think back to the other locations that are going into existing buildings, they have to do a lot to the exterior to bring it up to what it's going to be. You see this occurring at the Safeway Building.
Sure.
Um, you know, they, they have to put in additional entrances and, and things like that. Uh, Brandon can probably speak more to the enhancements. Um, I don't know if this came out of our specific design requirements. The Meadows annexation and zoning document that I'm referring to is different from our municipal code. So they have a very, um, strict application of design requirements that we don't necessarily require as a city, but that development does, that was agreed upon a while ago. So it may be in conjunction with that. But normally, we see facade improvements as a public benefit, um, for. So it may be in conjunction with that. But normally we see facade improvements as a public benefit um, for remodeling and things of that nature. Brandon wants to elaborate on that aspect.
And, and is the Meadows a corporation? Is it an entity?
Uh, no, it's um, it, it has uh, underneath the annexation and development agreement, it has um, kind of what we would call site-specific, uh, both zoning and design standards that apply to it. Um, twenty some odd years ago when it was approved, when that agreement was approved. Um, so kind of the look and feel of the development was dictated through those design standards that are, are applied out there. Um, so we refer to the Meadows kind of collectively as that area recognizing that there are um, I think nine or twelve different owners of various properties.
Okay.
Uh, both residential and commercial uh, out, you know, out on the Meadows collectively. But the reason I think you hear staff, particularly Hannah and I, refer to it just, you know, with that offhand or, or is that shorthand of the Meadows is we're really referring to the area that is subject to the annexation and development.
Geography, it's not a legal entity.
It's not a legal entity, it's the geography and, and the, the legal document that applies to it.
So the, so Home Two Suites has their package and their, you know, and it's a package that gets approved in other places. But because this is going into the Meadows and through some sort of, does it either design review council or we refer back to?
Well, we, we actually, no, we actually administer those. As we're adopted by the city as part of the, as part of the zoning for Meadows included those design standards that we apply out.
So when we apply these, these unique and additional design standards to their package, it results in a two hundred thousand dollar increase.
Yeah, or whatever it is. That's, that's the standards that everybody out there has to design to. Uh, so that may be different than what their corporate model normally would be.
Right.
Um, we see that in other areas of the city. Um, you'll remember the um, A and B Bank. Kind of uh, whatever you want to call that journey that we were on, kind of the same thing where their corporate, what their standard corporate was probably doesn't meet what our unique standards are for the city or in this instance, the unique standards to the Meadows area.
Okay. Okay, so the, so the, so the, I'll try to wrap this up, to try to get my head wrapped around. It's like a really sort of unique thing here. So the, so the two hundred grand. Um, Brandon, do you know, is that a hard number yet or is that still penciled in somewhere?
It's, it's penciled in. So we've had general contractors come out and make bids on the product. We, we think we're in the final bid process. Uh, and so those are the numbers that are coming in.
And then the fifty grand is the same way.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Hannah.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Smith.
Yet, is there, is may probably a question for someone else, maybe for Matt? Or, or for the city manager on, on the tax itself, the tax that's being asked to be subject to a, a rebate. How much of this five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars would be lost if we did not include the brand new streets and infrastructure portion of sales tax?
I'm going to have you restate that last portion.
From a different, different direction. Uh, citizens just barely approved renewal of the streets and infrastructure sales tax based on a message that the need is immediate and continuing. To five months later give away any portion of that seems like a bad message.
I see.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm contemplating the notion if this moves of asking that that slice of sales tax not be subjected, be subject to any rebates for anybody. But I want to know what, what number is really talking about. Is this a pittance or is it worth fighting over?
So one of the main components of these tax incentive programs that I'll, I'll defer to our city attorney because he says this quite well. Um, if I don't, um, but the hotel is planning to generate new sales tax. Um, and so the argument is kind of, I forget how you put it.
I, well. So I, recognizing that, that what is being asked for is not a rebate of, or writing a check out of the current tax base that we're talking about new tax dollars, and that's always been the cornerstone of both the tier one and any tier two programs we've had, is that it has to be new tax dollars. And those have to be fully remitted. So you can't, you know, withhold them from the city. You have to remit fully. And then they're rebated if you meet those conditions, right? So that's, um, it is easy. So we're not talking about existing tax dollars today. We're talking about creating new tax dollars that don't exist yet. So one argument is half of, you know, fifty percent of zero is zero and fifty percent of something is fifty percent of something new, right? You're not giving away something that you already have.
That part is understandable. Thank you. Um, and, and obviously I needed a tutorial on how this whole re, remade rebate.
As to the specific math, I don't, I don't do math, so that's Steve.
Uh, I, and I do, I do understand what you're referring, the tax that was just passed. The sales tax that they're going to generate is going to be built on that new number um, that was passed. So it will be a part of the new funds that they're generating.
So the fifty percent of something would include
Right.
Something to the streets.
I believe, and Matt is still in the room, so he can correct me if I'm wrong, but we went from three point six to four point two. They will be charging sales tax at that new four point two number. So collecting that new sales tax in addition to the other items. It will be, it will be a part of it. I don't also do math at the podium. Um, I do math at that care back there apparently. But that's the, that's the best explanation.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, Counselor Zalinski, sorry.
Are we ready to make motion?
I think, okay, let's see if, let's, yeah, I do. Let's see if, okay, do you want to wait then? You're good? Okay. Counselor Schacter, please.
Um, based on Councilman Smith's question, I'd ask Carl, if you mind, if you'd give us the best opinion you can at the moment. If we're doing a rebate at four point two, our new rate, half of which was part of our new street fund that was supposedly to go for improvement of existing streets and roads and infrastructure only. Is there a technical violation of the
Uh, no.
Ruling ordinance or?
No, I, I don't think so. No, no more so than your tier one would be. Because recognize that you're.
I'm asking whether it's.
Or tier two. No, I think it's, it's well within your authority as counsel um, to do that. Um, you, you know, there again, we're not talking about currently collected sales tax. Your use of city funds and how you apply those is, is up to you within the parameters of, you know, what those, those funds are, but how a rebate program works. You're well within your legal authority to do that. Uh, whether it's the tier one at twenty-five percent per year or it's um, a one-off tier two kind of rebate program.
And no issues with the, what do you recall, the governing ordinance that's?
Yeah, no, I, I don't think there's any, there's no issue with that or any of the other prior existing, you know, taxes that have been passed.
Thank you.
Right.
Okay, excellent. Uh, that was it. Question, okay. Counselor Townsley.
Two quick questions, uh, especially because we're somewhat new up here. It's, I'm understanding what you're, what you're asking here. It's a timing as to when these rebates would come back, tier one versus what you're asking for tonight. What's, what's the difference in your proposed timing on your projections of tax dollars as to when you would get the five sixty-five back? It's got to happen in seven years, but you said it's probably going to happen sooner than that. Tier one now at twenty-five percent. Again, what I heard was this would happen probably to be four or five years. What's that difference in timeframe that you think would happen based on your projections?
I don't know, I'd have to go back and look at sort of how we're underwriting it, but I'm guessing it's at least a year and a half difference.
It's not a huge amount. And is that difference more important to you than the, than the difference in the money, the five sixty-five versus the five hundred? Is the timing more important or is the money more important?
Um, well, I think they're both important. Money has time value to it, so the more money you get upfront, the more you can utilize that cash versus if it's spread out over a longer period of time, it diminishes in value.
But you don't know what that time difference would be, how much more is spread out over?
No, we haven't looked at the, the tier one option, the underwriting as, as of like.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
I would just add to that, just so our numbers are correct. My apologies, I was on twenty percent before. But to your, your question, uh, Counselor Townsley, um, using their actual math and the correct math, um, assuming the four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of sales tax generation that they have um, said that they would are expecting and the twenty-five percent a year of a hundred and seventeen thousand five hundred in the tier one program, they'd get to possibly five hundred and eighty-seven thousand five hundred and it would take the full five years. So they wouldn't get to their amount that they're requesting until year five in tier one, just to make that absolutely clear. Thank you.
Very nice clarification. Thank you. Okay, I see no more questions. Uh, open it up to the public. Uh, anybody out there that'd like to comment? Or in the room or out there in the world? Nope, we'll see none. Close the public portion, bring it back to the uh, to the council. And for a mo-, I'm entertaining a motion, actually. Let me, let me rephrase this. And item sixteen, tax incentive request for lodging at the Meadows, I'm entertaining a motion to move forward. And we got Counselor Zalinski.
Um, I would like to move to approve the tax incentive request for the lodging at the Meadows.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Can I get a second? Counselor Wymer.
For purposes of discussion, you have a second.
Okay, excellent. We have a uh, motion and a second to approve any discussion. And we'll start with actually Counselor Schacter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would not support the motion for the reason that we got to tier one. We hashed this over extensively with a great deal of angst in workshops and we made a decision to be uniform and consistent with parity and fairness, and that led us to tier one. The dollars to the, ironically, the dollars to both the city and the applicant are not grossly different. I'm not sure that I'm willing to bend from what we just set up tier one to facilitate timing of the applicant. So for that reason, and for the reasons we've discussed over the last month or more, I would oppose the motion.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Zalinski.
So I made the motion to approve for the very reasons that you're countering it. The numbers are not significantly different. As somebody who has worked on opening a business, getting things done, you understand that time is of the essence and I can appreciate the value to the community. I remember when this came before us the first time. One of my main reasons for recognizing the opportunity to approve it was that kind of replacement of a hundred and fifty units that we took offline. Not only replacing those missing lodging units, but also we're replacing them with like a high need category. Um, reducing our need for short-term rentals in the community and our neighborhoods, which is something that our, you know, constituents are very, very motivated to do. And additionally, you know, being able to fund this in, you know, possibly somewhere maybe two and a half, three years rather than five years, I can see where that would make a significant difference when you're starting to like work on your budget. And so I feel like in the true spirit of partnership, I feel like this would be a, a good move forward that doesn't necessarily hit our budget, which is our main concern, my main concern.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Well, I got, oh, you, you wanted to maybe have a discussion. No, you did. Counselor Wymer.
It's just a question of me being a little absent minded up here. Have we, have we asked the applicant what the result of a tier one would do to his position?
I heard a response.
Timing of their finances.
It's the time, it's the.
Not sure.
It's, it's, it's a, it's a negative impact in his estimation, a tier one.
Well, it's, it's, it's a timing, it takes a little, oh, sorry.
It takes longer to recoup the money.
It takes longer to recoup the money. And actually, according to Hannah's math, uh, it was about two and a half years, uh, two and a half, two to two and a half years longer. And according to Hannah's math, that actually would result in a higher actual see, like rebate by like maybe twenty thousand dollars. It's not significant, but it's the timing. And so we save a little bit of money by going with this now and help them secure a more expedient construction process because there's a quicker payback. And so that was my kind of
Yeah.
Analysis.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Schacter.
I just, I would add, what I heard the applicant say is theoretically, and maybe possibly there's a critical time value that might have, might affect their partnership with their financing. The, there's admittedly uncertainty all around, both on their part, our part, what will happen. I will also note, and one of the reasons I asked is if the current occupancy rate is seventy, eighty percent for a, for a um, resident-type facility, I'm not sure that we can all of a sudden project a hundred percent either. So anyway, I'm, again, I'm not concerned about that per se, that's their risk. But again, for consistency, um, I, I would stay with my reasoning for withholding approval.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Townsley.
You know, I, I think I would tend to, to, to side with Counselor Zalinski on this and that it probably doesn't make a huge difference to us. But then, on the other hand, when I listen to Counselor Shacter and you've gone through that whole process of the tier one, then does this send the wrong message to the city, to future applicants coming and asking the same question? Is there a way to put this forward where we're saying this is, you know, this, if this helps them, if this moves the project forward, if this gets us something of something versus fifty percent of nothing, how do we send the message out that we're still being consistent when the first thing, first force out of the gate is a, is a change or, you know, a difference to it? So those of you that have been here before, may, is there any other way to word this, do this, to where we help them with what seems to be something that's, it's a good deal, but it's not really costing us anything? And still saying, hey, wait a minute, we, we've just made this other change. We're, we're, we're keeping that at the forefront as well.
Okay, thank you. You're not on? Well, you should be.
All right, now I'm. Okay, so I paraphrased what I thought you were saying. So I'm going to ask you if you could answer if I have correct in the analysis of why this makes a difference. And then also if you could answer to Counselor Shatner's question about how you arrive at your numbers. Is that using a hundred percent occupancy or is that using actually how you've historically generated sales tax?
No, it's using how we've historically generated sales tax. But I would also add that if your hotel ever runs at a hundred percent occupancy, you're running it wrong. Um, and so I, I, I'm not even aware of hotels really running at that range.
And how about my understanding of why approving this as a sales tax incentive instead of a tier one rebate makes the difference for you?
No, it's a massive difference because you, you know, we, we had, like I mentioned before, we hadn't looked at the tier one because up until I think the last session it was twenty percent, which is significantly different. We thought we were trying to be more reasonable than certainly what some of the other groups had come in and asked for. Um, but the time value of money has a major impact on a development project and we're trying to find ways to make this project work.
Thank you. So I would just say one more thing, like the value, the potential value, looking at just the dollars, um, the potential value to the city is another thing I think that moves me just a little bit.
Okay. Counselor. Hmm, what happened? Are you on? No.
I just wanted to recognize Counselor Townsley's quadri and welcome him to council.
Thank you, Counselor Wymer. Counselor Schmoll.
Yeah, so I've heard, I've heard from the applicant that if, if we don't approve this, the project may go away. I didn't hear you say if you get this, you're definitely going to build it. Things are still shaky out there. There's still a lot of questions. There's still a lot of jitters about what's going to happen anyway. So, um, I don't, I don't see how I could support providing this additional tax incentive over what's already been structured and, and agreed that is the tier one that we're referring to.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we'll see none. I, uh, I got a couple of quick comments. So I'm, I'm looking at this at a, maybe from a different. Okay, we'll see none. I, uh, I got a couple of quick comments. So I'm, I'm looking at this at a, maybe from a different perspective instead of tier one and tier two. The, uh, last two applications we had were clearly, in my opinion, were clearly impacting smaller existing businesses. Um, in light of losing the hundred and fifty rooms to affordable housing, which was a, a great deal for affordable housing. Uh, but not such a good deal for lodging. Um, lodging tax pays for affordable housing. It's a two and a half percent that we get out of that. Um, so like the applicant said, he or they are their own competitor. We do have other hotels. I get that. We don't have very many suite hotels. We don't have multiple people rooms or suites. So i- i- in my opinion, I think this is a product that would fit in, is not in direct competition. With smaller existing stores we have is generating the new sales tax points. And the two and a half percent increased lodging tax and is replacing the hundred and fifty rooms that we lost. Lost, uh, in, in quotes. So to me, I am willing to go to tier two because I think this makes sense in this case. So I'm willing to support this. And if I see no other comments, then I will call for the question. What I missed?
You have one more comment.
I missed the boat. We're too slow.
Yeah.
Yeah. Can you hold it for after?
No, it's not, it wasn't.
Yes or no?
Good after, but.
All right, since this is your first night, Steve. Let's, let's clear the question up and let's do.
Was slow because I was using it on the screen to read the citizen comment letter that did come in today.
Right.
And I should have done that when you were asking for citizen comment. Uh, we did get a citizen comment. And I wonder if anybody on council has a thought about what Spencer said. If you got a, a agreement or disagreement with that.
Counselor Solinsky.
So, yes, I mean, this is, he's raised similar comments the last two times. And though they are thoughtful, um, I think that that does address somewhat the differences that counselor or that. Mayor Dem, um, just highlighted. Um, this is not Dame, sorry. This is not a, um. Cannibalization of existing businesses. This is, um, a replacement of some lost inventory. This is addressing a community expressed need. Um, this is generating future. Revenue that would not be existing. And so there are several significant points of difference. That I think, although, you know, it's, it was a very thoughtful letter, I think that there are some counterpoints to that, that we've discussed here. That do push my, um, my opinion. Did that answer your question?
Counselor Smith.
Yes, that, that was roughly the way I was in. Kind of building my response to this letter, that it was not quite apples and oranges, but it was tangerines and oranges. So, but I wanted to hear the voice of experience. Thank you.
For what it's worth.
That's right. Excellent. If I hear no other question this time, we'll call for the question. Yes, Counselor Townsley. Yes, uh, Mayor Proton Zelinski. Yes, uh, Mayor Dame. Yes, Counselor Weimer. No, Counselor Schmoll. Yes, Counselor, uh, Smith. No, Counselor, uh, Shacter. It passes five two. New group. Excellent. New group. Excellent. Thank you, Ryan. Thank, thank, thank you for coming, uh, up here tonight.
Thank you again all for the.
Presenting this. Now, we do want to see some walls go up. At least I'd like to.
Yeah.
I hope you can make it work.
Absolutely.
Good luck. Thank you.
Absolutely do our best.
Thank you so much.
Your concern. Absolutely. Thank you all and congratulations again to all of you. Members, the new mayor.
Thank you. Okay, council comments. We're going to do this a little different than in the past. I'm going to call on you. If you have something, say something. If not, say pass. So Counselor Townsley. All right, Counselor Schmoll. Well, good, uh, Mayor Proten Zelinski.
Oh, I don't know how to get back. There it is.
I just wanted to say welcome to our new board and commission members that we, um, approved during consent agenda tonight. We have new parks and rec and we have new housing. As always, I'm so grateful for the willingness for people in the community to serve and help us.
Excellent. Thank you. Counselor Smith.
Thank you for the coaching. Um, this is, this is really fast learning and I appreciate your patience and. In guiding us newbies on how to make, get things done. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Counselor Shacter.
Did we mention the firehouse open out?
We did.
And then the only other thing I congratulate our deputy chief and other of his personnel. For talking with a cop who is very successful and very well.
Okay.
And there's no sarcasm and it's a straight on kudo.
Excellent. Thank you, Simon. Counselor Weimer, nothing. And I, I don't think I have anything either. Maybe just again, thank you guys for jumping in. And asking all the questions and, and being part of it. Very lively. I, I appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks for being here. No, good job, guys. Moving on, city administration, city manager Steve Boyd. What do you got?
Thank you. I would just say, uh, primarily to the three new counselors, but everybody really. Uh, it's going to be hard in the first couple of months, kind of getting up to speed. You are welcome to call me. I mean, Sarah and I have built a little bit of flex into my calendar. I know that's coming. It's not bothering me. It's fine. If you don't reach me and you don't leave me a voicemail, I'll call you back as soon as I can, but you're also welcome to, uh, email me. Um, I'd like to have Sarah reach out and schedule just kind of a monthly recurring thing for an hour or so with each of you. I'd love to do that for a little while. Once you get your pace, then we don't necessarily need to keep doing it. Um, but I just wanted to let you guys know that as we get started here, I do expect that we're going to spend a little more time with you guys. So it's not bothering us.
I, I, I think I voted on all of the orientation things, so I think we've got dates, acceptable dates set up for that, so looking forward to that.
Okay, excellent. City attorney.
Uh, yeah, the only thing is welcome you guys. I appreciate it. Um, I'm going to have my paralegal, Angelique Pedersen, reach out to you guys. There are some things that I can't chat with you in open session about that I'd like to get you up to speed on. So we're going to try to get some meetings set up in the next couple of weeks with you guys, just to get you up to speed on those things, so you kind of have some background.
Okay, thank you, Carl. Uh, correspondence, I didn't see anything. So social events, Counselor Solinsky, that's going to be your job. Yeah.
All right. I like my new job. All right. I think we're going to Old Faithful. We're going to see y'all at DAX.
Sounds great. Thank you very much. And with that, I'm entertaining a motion to adjourn this first meeting of new constellation council. Uh, Michael, okay, sorry.
So moved.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None. Meeting is adjourned.
Out there.